All right, thank you. All right, good evening everyone and welcome to our regular zoning board of appeal meetings. Tonight it's Wednesday, can you guys be quiet a little bit? It's tonight's Wednesday 25th, 2018, it is 6:35 PM and we are at room 320, multi-service center 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. We have our regular member, Wilma Angerman's out tonight, so Mr., our alternate member, Mr. Jake Morrison will sit and vote for her place. I'm gonna make a roll call, my far-left, our town planner, Ken Buckland, our clerk, Jim Akabachi, my far-left, Mr. Jake Morrison, Attorney Ken, Jan Kendrick, and Mr. Carl Baptiste Senior, myself, the Chair, Nazir Al-Khlas, he's also present, Attorney Paul Haverty from Housing, representing the town on the housing case, and professional engineer Charles Rowley, and also Commissioner Pequena was here, I don't know if he left, but he was present.
He'll be back.
He'll be back, Dave Pequena. Okay, we have some minutes to do, June 13, 2018, and June 27, 2018.
I've reviewed both sets of minutes and propose we accept them as presented.
On 13 and 27?
A move, I'm sorry.
All right, we have a motion to approve the minutes for June 13 and June 27, 2018. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jan, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. Okay, so 5-0-0. All right. 312 Onset Ave, 20-16 Keith Amato. Was that meeting, was that hearing open?
Yeah, I think we got...
Not a hearing. Request for extension.
Just looking for an extension.
Extension on something being granted?
Yes, there was an approval for a special permit, tear-down, rebuild at 312 Onset Ave. Mr. Amato lives in California, he's been trying to coordinate his project long distance for the most part, he has performed some hurdles. Initially, the project was designed to be stick-built, he had that, those plans prepared, and then there was a cost estimate which exceeded his funding, and he could not get a loan based on that because it's, the appraisals on the property didn't justify it. So, right now, he's working with a modular company to place a home on the property. He's also been working on the demolition permit, which has been paid for and applied for, but the first thing that needs to be done is asbestos abatement, that is scheduled to be done next Wednesday or Thursday. Once the asbestos abatement is done, then they can do the demolition. David Andrade is scheduled to do the demolition, and once the demolition's complete, then he can get financing. He cannot get financing on the property with that structure as it currently exists.
If, just quick, when was the special permit granted?
Two years ago, August 2nd, I believe, was the date.
August 2nd, '16.
Did he start any physical work? No?
No physical work, he's been delayed with the structural plans and having to switch to modular.
Okay, all right, very good. What's the wishes?
How long do you need?
Well, I would ask for two years again, if possible, as I said, the asbestos abatement is occurring next week, and the demolition will be occurring shortly thereafter, so it should be moving ahead quickly, but if we can get two years, just because things happen.
I'd be more inclined to restrict the time, he's had two years and he's done nothing.
And has sat there for 40, in the condition it is in now. I have a problem with two years. It's been sitting like that for, since I was a kid, so.
Okay, so what do you guys like to do?
I make a motion, we grant it for the two years, without prejudice, next time, I don't, I don't know if we're gonna go next time, but...
Understood.
Do I have a second?
I'd like to make a condition.
Okay.
I'd like to see, I'd like to seek some action within 45 days.
I don't think it's gonna be...
Either they're gonna abate or they're gonna tear, no, they're gonna do something. Not gonna just sit for two more years and come back and ask for more time.
If he starts on 45 days, he only need an extension of 45 days, once it started, it started.
Yeah, the demolition could be considered substantial...
I don't think it's gonna take two years, you know, is, the demolition's gonna start when?
Next week. No, not the demolition, the abatement, the asbestos abatement is scheduled for next week, and then the demolition can occur once that's complete.
Say a year, I would say fair, whatever you want. I'm not voting on this anyway, but...
Okay. Well, I just, I just feel as though this gentleman needs to have his feet held to the fire a little bit, 'cause he's had two years and done nothing, that's all.
Would you feel more comfortable with just a year at this point?
I think I would.
Okay, so...
I just, you know, we gave him, we gave him two years and...
That, that place, and if he didn't take the initiative to do something, it's a family property, it was family property, and if he didn't take the initiative, it'd still be sitting in ISOL, so...
Yeah, that's not...
I don't wanna stop the project, I just wanna advance it. I'd rather have him come back and ask for another extension in a year, so we know...
Well, we have no objection if you want to amend your motion for one year.
Well, that's what we're gonna get for the vote.
Doesn't matter, you need a simple majority, you need...
Simple majority, you can...
Need three.
You need, only need three to agree to two.
You wanna try the two?
I'll go with the two years.
Do I have a second for two? Okay, I hear none, so another motion.
I move we grant for one year.
Do I have a second for one year?
Second.
Second, all in favor say aye.
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 Abstain?
Abstain, carries, one year.
Okay, thank you.
All right. 39-17, 40-17, 41-17, 42-17, Blue Wave Solar, charge point, minor modification.
Good evening, I'm Rich Riccio from Field Engineering, on behalf of Blue Wave Solar, I have Lexi Barlow here as well. We are here just looking for a minor modification to the special permit for two of the facilities, the Gibbs Brook facility, which was case 39-17, and the Pocasset River site, which was case 42-17, to substitute the surface detention area with a subsurface infiltration system. Basically, we'd be filling in the detention basins that were constructed with three fields of stone and plastic chambers to replicate the storage volume, and just leaving a grass surface on top. This was at the request of the landowner, wanted, didn't like the idea of having the depressions on his, on his site, so it's a, we did provide calculations to the town engineer with regards to the attenuation to show that it meets the same attenuation that the detention basin would on both of these sites. There's no other changes to the array layout, roadway layout, or the fence, it's simply a modification to the detention system.
All right, ma'am, you say, are you gonna testify for something?
I'm, I'm with Blue Wave for this...
Just your name for the record?
Lexi Barlow.
Okay, all right, I believe you discussed it with Charlie. Okay, let's hear it from Charlie, so it makes our life easier.
I made a site visit when I first got a request to look at the Route 25A project, I think was, which was the one out back. My only concern with either of these locations is that when the installation is done, it's done in such a way that the subsurface infiltration structures are protected from sedimentation. When I went out there and looked, there was very little in the way of vegetation which was on the slopes that are gonna contribute runoff. That's not an issue when all you have is an open basin where the water will simply settle down, but if you're gonna have an inlet area and take that water subsurface, and you don't have some control over the slopes that lead to it, you could end up with sedimentation of what's below the surface, making it not useful at all. So, as part of the construction procedure, I recommended that the slopes be protected some way, and you can do that by siltation fabric, you can do it with jute netting, you can do it with hay bales, you can do it with wattles, you can do it with all sorts of things, but that's the only issue I had. All the construction I saw, and have been out there a couple of, three times, it's been well done, but, so that's the only concern I had. Have no impact on any of the rest of the construction.
All right.
Do you have a plan for this?
Yeah.
It's too much, too much info, we're just gonna go by Charlie's recommendation. Jake, you wanna say something? Jan?
No questions.
Jim?
No questions.
Are you okay with Charlie's recommendation?
Actually, the plans that submitted, we do show a silt fence along the upper edge of both of these systems, ahead of the stone, that way, it would, you know, minimize the amount of sediment that could get into the stone system.
Let Charlie look at it quick, maybe we could get you on your way.
Yeah.
The modification gonna have to be recorded, too?
Mm-hmm, for the two of the...
As well? Does he need 20 days for modification?
Yes, it's just standard.
Yes, after 20 days. It's way too much information to absorb. Jan, can you pass? What do you think?
Just two questions. The first is, when do you start construction? And the second one would be, how do you intend to protect the slopes adjacent to the drainage area? I see the filter fabric, and I see the crushed stone edge drain, but you're gonna have a slope beyond that, that appears to be unprotected by, there's nothing there.
Mm-hmm, I know.
You need to, you need to put something on those slopes which will intercept that water before it gets to this edge drain or the subsurface infiltration system, otherwise you're gonna have sedimentation, you have to take out all over again. So, that needs either jute netting on top of your loam and seed, or some other protection for that slope, and that would be in both areas.
You're talking like a lot of upgrading, yeah, what gets disturbed?
That's correct.
Get reseeded, and we can put a, a fabric down over that to protect it, 'cause I know this is, this is pretty green now, this is well seeded and stabilized, upgrading of this, of the site.
When I saw it, it, it had seed beginning to come in, but it really wasn't substantial enough. If you have a heavy rain, some of that's gonna come back down inside.
Right, but we, we do have the silt fence protecting it, and we can, we can put some chipping in accordance with the design plans for erosion control, that shows up on our regular erosion control plan, in accordance with the SWAP.
And your schedule for getting it done?
I can answer that one. We're asking for, we're requesting pricing now from a couple contractors, so, as soon as possible. We already got approval from Concom as far as the areas we were in the wetland buffer.
When, when you anticipate to do what's asking, Charlie asking for?
That would be, I mean, I think the best time to do this would be in, you know, the, the fall planting season, this, this probably September, so we can get the grass going as well, quickly.
When you get in commission, the place commission?
End of the year.
The end of the year?
Oh, yeah, depending on the utility.
All right, so, I, I don't, personally, I don't have problems, say, give you a modification, but will, they will have a condition, Charlie, to go inspect, say, September 25, or whatever, we'll look at the calendar, and give us a clean bill of health, that you did what you're supposed to?
We could even notify Charlie before it's being done, then...
Well, you're gonna have to notify him, he go see it?
Yeah.
And then, he'll give us an answer. Let's get an answer from him, September 19, how's that? Can you do it by September 19, or should you go to October?
I would push till October, knowing how these, how these things go. I mean, we'd wanna get it seeded before the winter.
Okay, so hopefully, we gotta answer a letter from Charlie by October 10, you did what you're supposed to, how's that?
That's, that's fine.
So you go inspect...
You may not see, you may not see the full slopes generated with good grass before the spring, but so long as it's done within that timeframe, that should protect it for the winter months.
There's 53G still going, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, maybe you inspect on Wednesday the 3rd, come back to us with a letter on the 10th?
Whenever he tells me it's ready to inspect, I'll go on.
So we have to hear from him by Wednesday the 10th, okay?
Okay.
All right, very good. Okay, so, anyone else wanna, anything? Okay, can you answer something?
There are two motions you have to make, one for each application.
Two or three?
Just two.
Two. 39-17 and 42-17.
Okay.
The BWC Pocasset River and the BWC Gibbs Brooks.
All right, okay, on 39-17, what's the wishes? Can somebody make a motion to...
To do something.
To minor modification as presented?
Yeah, so moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
It's not quite as presented, I don't think.
With the condition of Charlie come back to us by October 10?
Right.
But let's, let's combine them, 39-17 and 42-17.
Forty, 39 and 42?
Right, as presented by the applicant, and, and with the condition that Charlie go inspect and get back to us by October 10.
And one other condition, that the slopes be stabilized?
And the slopes to be stabilized.
That's not shown on the plan.
Okay, and it must be recorded as well, okay? So these three conditions.
Do we have anything to write this off, or you're writing it all down?
Yeah, we're doing it now. Could we request, just to read, to see a draft of it before it gets, you know, filed with the clerk, just to make sure the language is all set and everything, would that be a problem?
Or what's your timeline on that, I guess, is also?
Whatever we've wrote on today, you can change it anyway.
No, no, I know, but... Make sure the, the right parties are listed and stuff like that.
It'll be drafted tomorrow.
Okay.
Great.
That's, that's good enough, that's, that's fine.
Ken, there is a 20-day appeal period, Stu?
Yes.
For each one, right?
Right.
Correct.
This is the other one.
Okay, Jimmy, you wanna read this? Read that motion.
So we're making a motion to grant, provided they notify the engineer by October 10th, there'll be a report by October 10th, the slopes to be stabilized, is there a date on the slopes? Charlie, you want it by a certain time, or?
By the time I inspect it. Actually, I'd like to see it as they install the system, so it probably will take a couple of inspection dates, one to see it during the installation, and one's when the slope protection's done.
Slopes to be stabilized with inspections.
During construction. So, do you get that? So during construction, just...
Yep, not a problem.
And it will be recorded?
Correct.
Okay. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Okay, it's good, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Same one, both of them?
Yeah.
Chris, did you give them a plan for 25B?
Yes, yeah, they have seven cards of each.
Okay, oh, all right, okay, thanks.
We'll be in touch on when they're gonna get out there, please.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
All right, 27-17, Donald McMullin, 16 Wareham Ave.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Just give us a minute, just a second, please.
Let's, let's just read the note, we don't have to, if he's giving us, well, just like the notice. This is the other one. Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on July 25th, 2018, at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571, to consider petition number 27-18 for a variance or special permit, and or special permit, from the requirements of Article 6, Section 622, Article 3, Table 321, and Article 5, Section 530 of the Wareham zoning bylaws, to Donald McMullin, P.O., Box 622, Onset, Mass. 02558, seeking to construct a 20-foot by 30-foot garage located at 16 Wareham Avenue, East Wareham, Mass., that's on Assessor's Map 1, Lot 454A, and 455A in the Onset Village 2 zoning district.
All right, name and address for the record?
Donald McMullin.
Just get close us for the record, so they have to hear it.
Donald McMullin, P.O., Box 622.
Okay, before we go forward, you have a violation, you have to rectify it in there?
No, I just spoke with the building commissioner, and he says at this point I should request a...
Withdrawal without prejudice?
Exactly.
Okay, okay, no problem, so make it easy, so that's what you would like?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion to withdraw without prejudice?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
I oppose?
We all oppose this, we're all here to oppose this motion, if we can oppose it.
The motion's been withdrawn, sir.
It's withdrawn?
What was withdrawn?
His hearing, so he doesn't wanna go forward.
Okay, 'cause he sees all of us here.
Now, I don't know, but if he go, if he wants to do again, he'll notify you.
Okay.
All right? Thank you, you're very welcome, so all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Thank you.
Withdrawn. There's nothing to mark, okay. Must be here somewhere, here it is. Withdrawn.
All right, 28-18 Ramos Realty Trust, 300 Glen Charlie Road.
Do we need to sign it, even if it's withdrawn?
Yeah, don't we can?
Do we need to sign it if it's withdrawn?
Just one minute.
Sorry. Yeah, we'll put this up here. This way. This is for the next one? This is for the next one, take one.
Where's, where's that, Dave? You have it?
You got it? Everybody get one of these, I took two, I think, by mistake. This is the past one. All right, let's hear that one in the floor over here. The Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on July 25th, 2018, at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number 27-18 for a special permit slash variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 621, and Article 13, Section 1335 of the Wareham zoning bylaws, Toremus Realty Trust, 300 Glen Charlie Road, East Wareham, Mass. 02538, seeking to construct an 816-foot living space addition and an 896-foot rear deck addition located at 300 Glen Charlie Road, East Wareham, Mass., that's on Assessor's Map 127, Lot C4, in the R130 zoning district.
Very well, name and address for the record?
Alain Mason, 14 Alfred Street, East Wareham.
Jeanathan Nagus, 1, 300 Glen Charlie Road, East Wareham.
Okay, you wanna tell us what you do, what you trying to do?
Bring addition from the rear. We'll bring addition at the rear of the home, along with the deck attached to it. They failed to mention that there's also a separated garage, a detached garage also being built on that property, it's depicted on the architectural plans and on the plot plans.
The garage isn't notice, isn't mentioned in the public notice that I just read?
No, sir.
Did you hear that?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
The public notice didn't include a garage that shows on the plan, so we may need to redo the public notice before we go much further.
You didn't?
It's not addressed in the building commissioner's denial letter either.
But you wanna, you wanna build the garage too, but you didn't put in the application?
Should I put in the application? Unless it was admitted by accident, or...
I think you left him put it in.
Okay.
Where's that notice?
It may not have put in, because this is the second permit we did. I came in earlier this year, and through waiting to get engineer and architectural plans that was requested, our initial permit was dismissed, because we didn't know it was on the agenda through a mix-up, so we had to refile again, so we refiled under the same, copying the same original, so the garage may not have been put on there, even though it's on the plans from the engineer and architect.
It could still be on the plans, but you're gonna have to notify.
You see, unfortunately, if, if anybody appealed it, you, if we grant it, you will, it will be denied in court, because you have, it has to be, any application, because the other one, that, all the application's gone.
Yeah, I know.
So you have to start from scratch.
Not again.
Oh, is it, is it an amendment to this?
No, you could amend, you could re-advertise. An amended application?
Okay, we wait and just file.
Re-advertise with amended description.
Okay, re-advertise and... Re-advertise and amend your application.
Could we, instead of doing that, just could we just regard the garage at this point in time and then come back later?
For the garage?
And do the garage, because I need to...
But you gotta pay the fees again and everything else again.
It'd be cheaper for you to just re-advertise with an amendment.
Okay. So it's gonna take, what, another two months?
No.
No?
Re-advertise maybe two, three weeks?
Three weeks.
Three weeks. So you'll come back, you could come back, now, August 22nd.
August 22nd?
I think it's best for you.
Okay. And...
I also recommend on the addition, maybe keep 20 feet instead of 15/8. It's very hard to go with the 15/8.
Along the side?
Yeah. Maybe have your engineer angle it a little bit, so you keep the 20 feet like he did the garage.
I'm lost here.
I show you. You wanna come forward? See this 15/8? Maybe have your engineer consider make it 20 feet because the old bylaw is 20 and I know you're in Jam here and we'd like to keep at least the old bylaw, all the rules and regulation. That's why he did 20 here. And maybe you should do 20 feet .5 in case you mess up in the construction because if you put the foundation, you're off six inch, one inch. It's no good. And here as well.
Is that along the property line?
Yes.
Adjacent to the high tension lines?
Yes.
Because there's a sharp angle that it takes. I think that's why...
I know. You know, but the...
That's why we asked for the variance because we knew that was gonna be an issue.
I understand. And the whole area is, it's zoned improperly, but we'd like to help the people. It's supposed to be 30 feet.
I know.
And we do understand that it's not fair for a lot of people who lives in this area because it used to be 20 and they did it at 30. So we're trying to help you out.
Okay.
So you have at least to meet the 20. Okay? So you're gonna come back, re-advertise? Do you wanna take this, sir? Show it to Mr. Churchill?
I'll tell the surveyor and the architect to come back on again.
Okay. So it'll be much better, much more legal for you, okay? Is there anyone, any audience wanna speak on this matter? Okay, we hear none, so...
Actually, I do have a quick question. Why wasn't this addressed the initial hearing when we came here?
I don't remember you came here before.
Yeah, I came. I came and they said it was...
I don't think you had a...
Was I here?
Did you have these plans?
We didn't have those plans, but we had plans and it was marked. And my concern was that line. And I was told at that time that because we were under the old bylaw, something or other, that it wouldn't be an issue.
No. How long ago you were here?
In May, March, earlier this year.
I was here?
I know he was here.
At least twice.
We've been here twice. You know, we've been back in...
I know we didn't have a sort of...
No, but he had... You had commented on, someone had commented on the plans. Who drew the plans? And I said, "My son-in-law." And he had everything measured out and the footage and everything. And you said you couldn't do it unless I had a stamped architect's plan.
Right.
And that's what the issue was.
Yeah. It's, I mean, it's three weeks. I mean, it's gotta get done right. Yeah, and you gotta mention this to Mr. Surveyor, whoever did it, at JC Engineering to fix it like I recommend. It works better. Okay? Thank you. So why don't we continue it? We continue it, right?
That's right.
All right, we'll continue to August 22nd, okay?
Okay.
Yeah, because they won't make the eight.
Actually, we have to re-advertise.
Right, that's plenty. One month.
Yeah, I'm just saying, if we re-advertise...
Can they make the eight?
Do we? Do we?
No.
Do I need to come back to the Assessors?
What do you think? Can they make? There's no way they'll make the eight?
Not with the publication requirements.
No. All right, so the 22nd.
Okay.
Who's gonna? You have to go back, modify your application at the planning department, okay?
Okay.
All right, so we'll make... Can we have a motion to continue this matter?
For the 22nd.
28-18 till August 22nd.
I move we continue until August 8, 2018.
August 22nd.
To August 22nd, sir.
So amended, so moved.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
I oppose, abstain. Okay.
I'd like to answer the gentleman's question about why didn't somebody tell him? So just so you understand, we're seeing this for the first time. We've had a 30-second review.
Okay.
What happened the last time has nothing to do with this time.
I know, but we went by what was said the last...
When you go to the town hall, they hand you a packet with a staple in the top left-hand corner and it's got, you know, four pages of ridiculous requirements.
Six pages.
Six pages of ridiculous requirements. If I was you, I'd find it ridiculous. So I find it ridiculous even on this. But it's what's required of everybody. We treat everybody the same.
Uh huh.
You gotta go through that. I mean, I've had several people contact me and say, "Why didn't they tell me?" It's on that paper. Read it carefully. And if you don't understand it, I highly recommend hire somebody that's familiar with the process. The few dollars that they're gonna charge you...
That's what we did.
Well, I mean, a lot of people come...
To the true of the $3,000, gentlemen.
Just so you understand, yeah, I understand. It's, that's why I call it ridiculous, but it's a lot of money. Before you get here, you've spent thousands. I understand it. But you have to understand, the other side of it is that you're asking the town to bend the rules for you and you're asking this board...
No, I wasn't. I'm asking for a fair shot.
That's why you're here.
Yeah.
But the rules say no and you're coming here and saying, "Can you bend the rules for us?"
No, no, I was just going by what I...
So the costs associated are justified.
From the initial meeting of the comment being that we were in the old area and when I mentioned that, because I thought it was an issue and I came for it.
We've got a long night. We gotta go. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Everybody pays the same. Thank you. All right. Continue public hearing, 4-18. Giant Cola Minehead Property, 72 Minehead Ave.
Mr. G. Cola's looking to postpone this to August 8. GAF Engineering tells us that they're ready on that date, their site plan. They are not ready today.
Very well. Do I have a motion to continue?
Until when?
August 8.
To August 8.
So 4-8.
The petitioner will waive any time restraints on the board
Okay.
ensuring that we hear in from the application.
And that's 14-18.
Which one is this? I'm sorry, is this...
14-18.
14-18 Alfie?
No, 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 no Alfie.
4-18.
4-18. You got plenty of room, Len. Plenty of time, so you don't need to waive it.
I just wanna let you know that, you know, I don't want...
All right, very well.
Trying to postpone this for any reason other than G getting GAF to finalize it.
So you'd like to continue to...
August 8.
Make a motion we continue to August 8.
I have a motion by Jim to continue petition 4-18 to August 8. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Abstain. I abstain. Denied, so it's 4-1, 4-1-0. So see you on 18. Thank you. All right.
Are we gonna do...
Next one, 14-18. Len, are you good with four people?
Yes.
All right, very well. Jim will take over.
Have we already read this in?
This is a brand-new one.
That's a brand-new one. Oh, we...
No, it's continued.
That's continued. It's already been open, so...
So it is open. So I don't need to read it again. So go ahead. What do we got here?
This is Alfie Elbaba. It's 3070 Cranberry Highway. It's the you-first-used car lot. He was before you in March of last year. You granted him a special permit for sale of used cars. And at that time, he requested 25 cars and that's what you granted him. Essentially, we're here to increase that number from 25 to 50. You have a plan that's been submitted with the application and for history's sake... Here's the plan. Since 2002, this has been a used car lot and there have been two licenses granted, one to Rod Terrell, who was the actual owner of the property. And that was for 50 cars on this same plot of land. And then Rod Terrell leased it out to a Spirit. Spirit Used Cars got a license from the town and that was for 50 cars. And for some reason, Mr. Elbaba was advised to come and only ask for 25 cars to get started and begin his business and then come back for additional cars after he worked it.
All right. We have more than one either transfer or application regarding used car lots in front of this board at this time. And the other applicants have been mandated to come back with a full site plan review, full set of plans. I think it would be... I think we just have to follow suit and request the same here.
One, well, I don't understand why you would require that of them, number one. But number two is, this is just a modification of something that's already been approved.
We approved 25.
Right.
So, and was there a site plan at that time?
Yes. There was a site plan at that time. Charlie Rowley went out and did inspections. He was before the board on at least four occasions. I have all of the minutes of all of those meetings. The last meeting specifically says that Charlie Rowley had reviewed the drainage, the landscaping, the lighting, and that it all complied.
For 25 cars or for 50?
Well, it's, for 25 cars because that's what was asked for, but it's the same parcel of land. We haven't increased anything. We're not increasing the building. We're not making changes to the building. If I show you photos of the actual lot...
I'm familiar with the site.
Half the lot is empty. So half of the property just remains vacant with 25 cars on it. The...
Is this the old file?
I mean...
That's the old, this is the old...
He's been operating for a year. His lot is clean. There's no parts. There's no tires. There's none of that hanging around the property. There was a request by the building inspector that he put up a fence to block off an area where cars that were not for display would be located. I have photos. Within three days of that request, when I spoke with David, that fence was up blocking off the area that David requested. As part of his so-called site plan, he was asked to fence off the area between him and Bennys. And he fenced off the area between him and Bennys, even though now that's sort of a... Because Bennys has gone out of business. But I don't think... I mean, if there's something specific that the board would like to see at that lot, I have no problems with a condition of the special permit that he do A or B. But just to make him go through an expense of $20,000 for no reason because it would have no bearing on whether the drainage isn't gonna change because the number of cars is different. The runoff of the water is the same. He has, oil separators were put in when he started this. I spoke with the person that put them in, so...
Let me ask our engineer. Charlie, you're looking at the same plan we're looking at?
I assume so.
Okay. And it appears to be this, almost the second page of the original of the old plan. I don't know, do you have a copy of the original? Do you wanna see this one from before?
I recall it from the...
You recall? Would you... Do you need to see it or do you feel the need to look at it for any reason?
Was there a particular question?
No, no. Mike, I'm gonna ask you if...
Okay.
If you have any comments and then I'm gonna turn to the board. It's, you know, it's not my desire to make it harder for the man.[1514.48] It's, you know, it's not my desire to make it harder for the man. I want to know what the board feels as far as the site plan and the review.
And I'm glad to show you, Charlie, if he would like for a refresher, the minutes of the four prior meetings or the licenses granted to Spirit or Terrell. They both indicate 50 cars. I have that. And when Mr. Elbaba went before the selectman, the selectman authorized 50 cars. But he didn't follow through and ask you for 50 cars.
That wasn't my concern was, knowing the property and knowing the history, I know that there was, there were requirements of the Terrell ownership that were not fulfilled. And I'm unclear if they were ever met under current ownership. That was my only concern.
And I believe they were, Jim. I believe that that's probably why and explains why you were requiring Charlie to go out and make visual inspections and sent them back out for a second inspection until you were satisfied that everything was stopped.
I recall a little concerns about lights shining into the roadway, et cetera. I recall all that. I'm just looking for some commentary from somebody else on the board or Charlie to...
He already owns the license.
Yep.
It's the number. So, it's a modification on the number. More than 25 cars there now. I don't see an issue. I support the modification for 50 cars.
I don't see a problem either, as long as he has enough spots for the cars and for people to park and like we do every time, if nothing changes.
Thank you. Who do you think, Jim?
I do have a, I don't want to say vivid recollection, but vague recollection of this process and this gentleman being before us several times. And I do recall Mr. Rowley making some requirements that were met. I can't conceive of why allowing him to have the full use of his permit would require an additional site plan review, but I quite frankly would defer to the town engineer on that.
Charlie, do you have anything to add?
It appears that this plan does not increase any of the impervious surface over what was there before.
Yep.
The previous plan was quite limited in terms of the information that was there. Not an awful lot more detailed than what we're shown right here. Landscaping is limited as it was on that previous plan, but it was in conformance with the special permit that was granted at that time. The lights were put up according to that permit, so the only thing that I'm seeing is the difference in the parking count. Whether you consider this to be a new application because it's an increase and whether it needs to comply fully with other regulations in the zoning bylaw, I guess, is your determination.
Well, it sounds to me like the wind's blowing in the applicant's favor, so I'm certainly not going to make a barrier.
I'll make a motion to grant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Wait a minute, before we vote, is there anybody here from the audience who'd like to speak about this, against or for this? Nope? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? You're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim, is that a modification of the...
Modification.
Okay.
All right, guys. 400, correct? Yeah. Okay, 17-18 RM, RM Realty LLC, 3035 Cranbury Highway.
This is where the berm was?
Yeah, that's just...
That's where the berm was?
Yeah, we share.
What's this one now?
This is where the berm was?
Yeah, they had a berm right there.
This is... Oh, this is the Water Whiz. Yeah, we can share that.
It was gotten wrecked, somebody pulling out of there the other day. It had got hit last time, and now they're a little damaged.
Yes, sir. Of course I do. Do it right. I do it like... I do it over and over again. All right. Can you guys pass that paper, finish signing it and pass it?
Yes.
All right. Where were we?
Let me know when you're ready, Mr. Chairman.
Just one second. Just a minute. Yes, again, I have to. Just the front page. Thank you, sir. All right. We're ready for you. Publicating's still open, so...
Evening, board members. My name is Richard Serke, and to my left is Jim Peterson. To his left is Tony Stella. To his left is Eric Brotmacher. And to his left is Patricia Kells, who's the principal of the applicant. You'll recall that the petition before you pertains to proposed additional parking, and no spaces are available for the Water Whiz facility on the adjacent property. This property is separately owned by a different entity. When we were last before you, we were asked to come back to you tonight with some additional information, which we have in the form of pictures and the plan that's before you. The first picture that you have is looking south from Cranbury Highway, and it shows the area where the berm that used to be there has been removed. The second picture that you have before you is looking north on the Water Whiz site with the LLC property to the right exiting onto Cranbury Highway. The third picture that you have is looking east across the site from the Water Whiz And the last picture is again looking north on the Water Whiz facility in a southerly direction with the subject property located to your left. As I indicated, the berm that had separated the two lots has been removed. There has been surface improvement in the area of the former footprint area of the Hong Kong Island Restaurant. Hay bales have been put down in preparation for vegetation that's to be cleared pursuant to the approval of the Conservation Commission. As the pictures indicate, pavement markings have been put down directing traffic that enters the property and leaving the property. And you'll notice from the pictures that barrels have been put down in an effort to further direct traffic. We happen to have a letter from the manager of the adjacent gas station, which has the benefit of an easement over the property, allowing the easement area to be obstructed while Water Whiz is open. And that is why in the pictures you see parking up to Cranbury Highway within the easement area. So, with that, I'll just remind you that the relief that we're seeking before you is, number one, an appeal of the building inspector's direction that we needed site plan approval, but if that is denied, we are seeking site plan approval and a variance to the extent necessary to allow the parking as you see it on the plan that's beneath the last photograph and as depicted in the photographs to remain.
Okay. Just for the record, Mr. Jake Morrison was set in this matter because Milma is out. He did attend the previous hearing, so he could vote on this. Can you just repeat what you said about the easement by the gas station?
There, if you look at the plan, Mr. Chairman...
Yeah.
You'll see a triangular area.
Yeah.
That triangular area is the subject of an easement that was granted to the gas station property.
Right.
Allowing access across it from Cranbury Highway for traffic going in an easterly direction.
Right.
We have a letter from the manager of the gas station indicating that he has no problem with that area being obstructed by cars that would park in that area, notwithstanding the easement.
Who's the manager? Manager or the owner?
Ms. Kells?
Yes, the owner, he clearly gave the permission for the manager to give the letter. The owner did not want to write a letter because he felt the manager would be in charge of all the things that were happening there, and he would be the person to make that decision.
So, he said during the season you could block it?
Yeah.
Counsel...
If I may...
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
As the triangle comes from this end, what we're proposing, what we've done is block this curb cut where his customers would fly across this triangle very fast. We are leaving this second curb cut so that his customers are coming straight in and straight into his gas station. I've just put DOT barrels along this curve to stop the traffic from pulling in across here, across just this end of the triangle. We're not taking the whole usage of the triangle away from his customers. We're just encouraging them to pull into the second curb cut.
Okay.
To make it safer for everyone.
He doesn't have a problem with that?
Not at all.
This is the, this is the letter that was, that was sent, and it states, and it's signed by the manager of Cape Cod Gas Station. It says, "Cape Cod Gas Station gives Water Whiz Water Park on this 29th day of June 2018 the permission to put up barriers to prevent traffic at the right-of-way," which is the right-of-way that Mr. Brotmacher was referring to. "We are hoping that this will eliminate traffic from cutting through."
But wouldn't you, wouldn't you agree that this relieving this property from the easement has to be properly drafted and recorded?
If it was to be legally effective, yes.
Okay.
In order to be accepted for recordation at the Land Court Registered District of Plymouth County, yes. But what we have is, is permission. It's not a release of easement, but it's permission.
Counsel, what do you think? Paul? What do you think? You're not listening.
I'm not answering at all.
Charlie? I know, it's all right. Charlie, what do you think?
So...
That's all right.
That's a legal issue. I'll try to answer.
How about the access?
How about you restate the question for me?
Okay. There's an easement here in question, and the property that have the easement that owns the right-of-way from the other property, given a verbally or regular, like, simple letter, allowing the applicant to stop the easement, like, to block some of it without being recorded, just a simple letter, verbally, but the manager wrote the letter, but...
Mr. Chairman, may I suggest...
Yeah, maybe he explained it better to you.
No, that is the issue. A portion of the, a portion of the subject property is encumbered by an easement for the benefit of the adjoining property owner, okay? For access. And with the permission of the manager of the gas station, that, that the use, the entire use of, the use of a significant portion of that easement has been obstructed. I have, and I certainly don't claim that the letter of permission could be recorded because it's not from duly authorized agents documented of the landowner. But I have no problem with a condition of this decision being that if the plan were to be granted site plan approval as requested, that it would, it would, the site plan approval would be conditional upon the continuation of that permission at all times while Water Whiz is operating.
So, Mr. Chairman, if your question was, is that letter enforceable? I mean, it's not an easement. It's not something that can be recorded, so it is revocable at any point.
Okay. From an engineering point of view, what do you think, Charlie?
I don't like it because I'm not sure what liability it throws on the part of the town to make a decision with a special permit in a condition that is not legally binding. If the owner signed the letter, I don't know that I would have that much of a concern. But if that letter is not enforceable and can be revoked at any time, I can't envision what liability there is, but there could be some, and your decision would be based on something that...
How's the liability back on us?
You're issuing a special permit for a project that involves the partial use of an easement.
Let him finish.
I...
We put a condition on it that it's, the manager takes back...
I'm only speaking about it as an engineer. I'm not an attorney, so I defer to anybody with legal expertise.
You said liability.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think Charlie raises a good point with regards to the individual that has issued the letter. I'm not sure that that's of any value whatsoever because they're not the ones that have the right to control the easements.
That's what I'm saying. To make...
A condition that required permission from the easement owner, I think, would put the board in a better position. But it would still be revocable at any time.
Right.
But I also think that the suggestion of Mr. Serke that a condition could be imposed that says that the site plan approval would be rescinded if that permission is taken away is fair. It's doable.
Let me phrase it another way.
Can you get a, from the owner? I mean, he comes and goes. I know the guy. So, he comes a lot in this county, so can you get a letter from him?
He's declined. He's expressed...
He says that this is between two business neighbors. He doesn't really, all due respect, he doesn't feel...
The need to give a permission?
Excuse me?
He doesn't feel the need to give a permission?
Right, because we're neighbors.
Okay. So, why do you have his manager write a letter, so?
I think they needed something. They wanted something.
It's the manager.
All right. Let me, let me rephrase it differently. Do they need it? Do they need a letter?
I was, I will, let me put it this way. If I am representing the property owner, I want that letter on record. Not on record in the registry of deeds, but I want that record, I want that letter in place because if I don't have the fact that I'm agreeing to it as a permissive use, it could then morph into an adverse use that leads to a prescriptive easement or an extinguishment of the easement, the prescription. So, I think the owner should want to give a letter himself.
I'm not questioning anything that, that my colleague, Mr. Haverdy, said. Let me suggest this as a way out. As a condition of, of site plan approval and the other relief requested, in the event that the owner of the gas station acted in any way to prevent what you see on the plan, the site plan approval would be void. In other words, condition it upon no action on the part of the gas station owner to enforce his easement.
Okay.
I'm looking at this, excuse me, but I'm looking at this, and the triangle is the easement.
Yes.
But that's the curb.
What I've got there in orange...
That's where the curb is.
That's the curb cut. They haven't, so the curb cut is there, the both curb cuts remain. And these, maybe I'm misunderstanding. You guys want to put three or four 55-gallon drums in that opening?
Yes, sir.
To stop people from coming in?
As you see in one of the photos.
And if you didn't put them there, how would that impact your use of the rest of the property?
Well, how would it impact the use of...
Yeah. If you didn't put those...
People would still fly across that triangle, opening us to liability.
I think we suggested it as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Suggested by us.
One second. Excuse me. Let's do it one other time.
Yeah.
My concern is, you're saying if you don't put these barrels, it creates liability for you, right? For people flying. What happened if the gas station owner tomorrow sells the station, another guy comes in and says, "Take your barrels out"?
We're not, but we're not stopping. We're only putting barrels on that one third of the curb.
I totally understand, and it's nice of him to let you use it. My concern is, we need to know how much dangerous it is or how much liability presents to you if a new owner says, "I want these curbs open." Let's say a new guy comes in and says, "I don't want the barrels." We should plan those plans without the barrels. I mean, it's nice to keep them on, but let's say, like I said, the new owner says, "Move the barrels."
So, you're saying we'll grant this? We could grant this without...
It should, it should be...
There's agreement between them to cut that off? Is there agreement? It doesn't even play a part in this, you're saying?
It shouldn't. It shouldn't be played a part of it, and the parking lot...
I think you can still have your letter that says they can, but it shouldn't play a part in this decision.
I don't think it should. It should be whether they exist.
Okay. So, we suggested it. At the last meeting, we suggested all this, so...
Maybe our suggestion was improper.
Maybe we should move past this and then go on the site plan.
I, I, I think it, I think the better solution would be to say that the site plan approval and the other relief is conditional upon no action being taken by the owner of the gas station to enforce the full easement rights.
I mean, I think that, I think that's a, I think that's a fair solution, and most certainly, if the applicant is willing to take that risk...
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman...
Yes.
Rather than have the board really weed into this property interest discussion, the site plan shows particular details that include blocking this off.
Yeah.
If there is a circumstance in which that blockage is not in place, they're not in compliance with the site plan that was approved. I think that gives you...
And then what we do?
... sufficient amount of coverage.
Okay.
Well, then they either have to come in and seek to get that modified, or there's going to be enforcement action taken.
Why would we want to do this? Because I know it's going to happen in the future. Why would we do, we grant something like this? Why can't we design this parking lot based on that, that gas station still have the curb and add in a barrel, add in safety? So, we should design it without interfering with that, interfering with that easement because it's very much, in the future, the new, even the present owner could say, "You know what? I want this easement."
That's certainly cleaner.
Then we, they got to come back for modification or...
Need the potential for that.
Right. And then all the inspector, commissioner, go put a season decision on it.
So, we can, we can...
I think we should act without it.
Without it. And if it's a private business-to-business agreement...
That's between you and them.
To block it off, it's between you and them.
What plan, what plan would you be approving?
We don't care if the barrels are there or not.
We'll separate this one.
Pardon me?
We'll work on this plan without the barrels.
It's an agreement that they make with the, with the business owners. Do that.
Yeah.
Just to clarify, Mr. Chairman...
I don't recall.
Kevin, you have a set of plans in front of you right now that show it, so I think you should at least condition...
They don't show it.
They don't?
I don't see the barrels.
Okay, then.
The pictures, because we asked for it.
On the plan. I mean, pictures do, but...
I think we go, I think we should move forward to the site plan itself and forget about this private situation.
Yeah, exactly.
Get some white out on the barrels and get on with it.
Let's move with the site plan without the barrels.
Yeah.
I mean, if they put it, they put it. If they don't, that's them and the neighbors.
So, the problem, though, is that, the only problem with that is, if I recall, there was a great deal of discussion last meeting about concern about there being an additional access point as a matter of safety. I remember, and that's, I believe, that's what spurred all of this course of action that brings us here today. And I do see that as a valid concern, having an additional uncontrolled access point.
But it's also a concern for them, for the, for their safety. So, I think they're going to move past that. They're going to make their private deal with the, with the gas station because it's helping their location.
If I, if I...
Am I wrong?
Yes. No, you're right. You're right.
Because there's another access point that they don't want.
I think the intention, and correct me if I'm wrong, is for Water Whiz to control all the traffic to and from their, their operation, from their main entrance, and not use either of these curb cuts. So, if they wanted to, they could put barrels all along the line of the...
The second one.
Of the easement.
Well, there's a curb, there's a curb between...
If they want... I mean, at their own option. I don't think we need to require it.
That's a good idea, what Jimmy's saying. Along that...
Along here.
Along here.
And that would just...
You could put barrels there.
You're afraid, you know...
Right.
If you want. I mean, at their own option.
If you want.
I don't think we should require it. I don't think... If they're concerned about traffic barreling in and out, then instead of having the barrels at the curb cuts, that at the corner of the curb cut within your, you know, outside the...
The desire is to put the barrels at the westerly curb cut and to use the balance of the land for parking.
Yeah, and...
Just... Let's go past it.
You gotta move past this.
I'm not comfortable granting a permit based on the barrels. If a guy come one day, tell you move them, then the permit is in jeopardy. So, let's go plans without barrels. You want to put them, fine. You don't, that's you and them. Okay, let's go forward.
Yep.
So, who wants to speak?
No, I...
All right.
We'll go along with what you're suggesting.
All right. Did we... Charlie, did you review any drainage on that? Anything?
This is the first time I've seen the actual plan. I do have some questions on it. I did talk with David Bichette. I understand that there was a work conditions issued for the clearing. Discussing it with him, that's the only thing that they approved. And in looking at this plan, there are no contours on it, so I can't tell within that cleared area, are there going to be slopes that can be built? If there are slopes, what will they be filled with and how will they be maintained? So, that is an open question. If I could, though, getting back to the entrance issue. Somehow, there needs to be more control over that entrance than just eliminating the barrels because that will leave an open spot.
Let him finish, please.
Blocked off somehow so that you can't use that double entrance.
They're not using it. They don't want to use that.
The way this is shown, if you don't have some sort of physical barrier there, it's going to be nothing to stop.
Right.
Look at the second photograph that they showed you. Where that black car is, I assume, is current entrance exit. If there are no barrels next to that, it will always zip through that area.
Let me ask you something. Would you guys be opposed to put a fence along this easement? Oh, you don't want a fence?
Are you talking about this picture here? So, when... Can we... If I could just bring up a point. When this easement exists, when the restaurant was there, they shared use with it.
Right.
They parked their vehicles in the upper part of the easement, right next to their sign.
Okay.
Yet, people still drove right through, you know, the parking lot to get to the gas station. They had to install a speed bump to slow traffic down, cutting through their parking lot for this reason. You know, they were able to use that triangle in good faith for years with the gas station, parking their customers there and using it back and forth.
Okay.
We're using this just as an auxiliary exit.
Can you put two fence plates to post across with a chain?
For that entrance? For the whole...
For the small curb cut. For the small curb cut.
And then, when you do MTL, you can take the chain, just unhook the chain, unlock. I think it's only set in two posts.
Well, that wasn't what I had in mind.
I know. But I'm trying to help them, not you. I know what you had in mind.
Well, I'm saying, it's where those first five parking spaces are. There ought to be some barrier across the end of those so that they can't screw up across that what they've got labeled as an existing curb.
I'm going to use that.
Well, that's...
They don't use it.
Yeah, that's not being used. That's blocked off.
That's what I'm saying. If they put a fence plate...
That's what I'm saying.
With chain across, no one's going to cut across. No one's going to be able to get out there.
They need that for an exit?
You know, excuse me. If you may, the striped area you have on the plan, can you make shrubs or something? Counselor, do you see the striped area in the front? On the front? The striped area on the plan?
Talking about on the hypotenuse?
The striped area on the plan, those triangles. Can you put shrubs or something? No? Yes, ma'am, but you have a completely different use now. It's a different use. It's not a restaurant. He was an existing business. Now, you're not proposing a restaurant. If that building was still there and you're doing a restaurant, you can. But you're using this parking for a different purpose. You're changing the use totally. We're trying to help you out. You can't just have a wide-open parking lot. I mean, if you...
Mr. Chairman...
Yes?
I want to ask you to reconsider the suggestion I made earlier.
Go ahead.
And that is that the westernmost access on the site would be blocked with barrels.
Okay.
And that the site plan approval and other relief requested would be valid as long... Unless and until the owner of the gas station seeks to open up that entire easement area and in particular, the westernmost access onto Cape Cod Cranberry Highway. In other words, make it conditional upon the owner, on the owner to take some enforcement action. Until and unless he does, it seems to me that blocking the westernmost entrance and then using the rest of the property as overflow parking accomplishes everyone's purpose. And it makes the relief conditional upon the owner of the gas station not coming across and saying, "The permission's over". Once that happens, then we have to come back here.
And could I just make one statement?
Yes.
We use that parking maybe five weeks out of a whole year.
I understand.
But we're doing everything to make it safe for people. The gas station people are happy with us. Nobody is complaining about this. I don't know why we're having so much difficulty with this.
Because everybody appreciates your business, and I know you make a lot of people happy, and you're doing a good job and everything, and I hope you do wonderful. But there's certain rules we have to follow. There's certain rules like we impose on everyone else. It's got to be followed.
Rules are we breaking? Tell me the rules.
The rules... Well, first of all, this is going to have a site plan. I don't see drainage in there. That's first of all. Where's the drain? I don't see any catch basins. I don't see any water management studies.
None of that was required. None of that was required because, again...
Okay. So, if somebody enlightened me, is this required?
Actually, in the building... In support of what he's trying to... The point he's trying to make, the building commissioner's letter did say that the change of use requires a site plan review. We're trying to avoid that. You're requesting that we waive that. I've talked with the manager kind of off the side while everybody's been talking. The manager and I see a reasonable solution. Would you like to recommend it, or would you like me to recommend it?
Yeah, I mean, I'll recommend that we move those barrels from the west down curb cut into the hypotenuse of the triangle to block that part of the triangle and still...
It restricts the traffic. They're removable if something changes in the future. You're not making a permanent barrier, but you're still preventing... You see what I'm suggesting?
I know.
And it might...
Well, do the same thing with the chain.
Yeah. Just, yeah.
Can I have a chain that goes across the two properties?
This is actually...
Just the entrance, right?
I just think this... You know, sometimes a chain isn't seen, and these barrels would be seen.
I understand, but there's a four. With all due respect, you ask them, you have to deal with Article VII, Article IX, Article X, and Article 15 of the bylaws, and somehow you ask them for a variance. It's clearly what... So, you want us to overturn the building...
No, no. I'm asking for a site plan. In this part of the relief that I'm requesting, I'm requesting site plan approval and a variance to the extent necessary from the articles that you've just recited in order to approve the plan that you see before you.
And what's the hardship to grant the variance?
Well, because the park has been in existence for such a long period of time. It needs additional parking in order to guarantee the safety of its patrons and the public in general. This property was acquired in a separate name in order to accommodate that need, and I don't know any other way of accommodating the parking needs of a pre-existing non-conforming use other than by acquiring additional property for the purpose of satisfying that parking need.
That doesn't constitute a hardship. That doesn't prove a hardship. We all know what the hardship requirements are.
Well, if in fact, the alternative to parking on this property to accommodate the needs of the water whiz on the adjacent property, if parking is not permitted on this property for that purpose, what would you suggest be done with the patrons?
I won't have a problem...
Yeah.
If you come with a site plan review, but, I mean, I don't have a problem to wave lights, wave some few things, but I cannot just allow the whole thing without a site plan.
I'm asking for site plan approval.
Without site plan review, I'm talking.
No, I'm asking for site plan review. The variance request was merely approval without requiring us to satisfy all of the additional articles that would otherwise be applicable in a situation other than ours. So, it's site plan approval that I'm requesting with not insisting that all of the submission requirements that are applicable normally to site plan approval be waived.
Let me... If I may, I want to ask each member, let everyone give their opinion, if you don't mind, Counselor. Jake, what's your opinion? So, go ahead.
I understand from both sides, you know. This talk, I'm just trying to listen to you guys and see if we have the same argument.
All right. Counselor, what do you think?
You know, I can understand the position of, you know, this is merely opening up additional parking. There is no change in use at all. It is a water park, and the water park now has more parking.
Okay.
And it's a good thing.
It is. I didn't say it wasn't.
And so, you know, that is my take on it. I don't see... I think it kind of bends logic a little bit to say that it's a change in use.
Okay. So, that's two to go. Two for you, Cal.
Can the hardship be on the town, or does it have to be on there?
No. Forget the hardship. Do you agree?
I'm going to tell you about the hardship.
It can be on the town.
When they had to hire police officers because the traffic...
That's irrelevant.
Because the traffic backed up to Atlantic Boat because the traffic couldn't get into their place fast enough. We haven't had any... We don't have that issue now with the additional parking, and it's only going to get better when the property gets cleared. They'll have additional parking, okay? And as she said, it's five weeks. They do so much for the town.
Of course, they do.
That ugly building that was there, they knocked down, that would still be sitting there. And who could have bought it and what could be there? I'd rather have a parking lot than anything else. So, I've already discussed it with you. My support is to the water whiz.
You got one to go.
You know, I'm for it. So, all I just want to do is find a solution. I just... I don't like being a barrier to business, and I think we just want to tell them to do lots of business and pay lots of taxes.
All right. Ken?
I can imagine the taxes they're paying for five weeks.
Ken? Say what you want.
You're going to have a parking lot the rest of the year, sitting there.
Paying taxes for not being used.
Yeah, what's the taxes?
One of the things that I think can address this, I've talked with the building commissioner, Dave Requena, is about changing the zoning bylaws to specify parking lots as a use within the zoning so that we have some basis for managing parking within the town.
True. I agree, but it doesn't apply in this matter, unfortunately.
No, it doesn't.
All right. Charlie, what do you like to say?
With respect to the drainage, if you go back to the way that the property looked when the building was still there.
Yep.
It had an impervious roof. The parking surface that was there then, with the exception of that, is still there. So, for all intent and purposes, the total impervious surface on this property has not changed from what it was before. So, I don't know that drainage calculations are the most important thing. What is important to me is what happens on the area of land that's been cleared and whether or not there's slopes that need to be protected in that section. And the other issue is the parking with respect to access and egress from Cranberry Highway, which appears that it's been satisfactorily addressed by the location of the barrels so that they're forced to make their turning movements out of the existing driveway. So, as far as I'm concerned, and what I would look at, you'll still need to consider variances to the parking and so forth, lighting and all of that with respect to Article 15, Article IX. But to expect them to go through drainage calculations for a surface that's already there doesn't make any sense. The runoff is going to go wherever it went before today. So, the only thing I'm concerned with is that slope in the back and whether there is one. If there isn't any slope and it's flat, then perhaps it's no big issue. But if there is a slope that needs to be protected, I'd like to see the details of it.
Actually, Charlie, if I can address that, there is some contouring back there. It's very minor. There's a couple of little spoil piles, and they've been contoured. If you look...
It's not... Within the area that's proposed to be cleared...
Right.
You're clearing from the 50-foot no-touch zone out a long ways. I'm looking at the scale of the plan. It's anywhere from 30 to 40 feet. I don't know what's going on in that area. I can't tell by this plan.
Is this in front of conservation?
Yes, it was. And they got approval for the clearing.
Conservation has put restrictions on what gets done there?
They approved the clearing.
Yeah.
According to David, that's all they approved.
Okay. But as far as erosion control and all that that you're concerned with...
They didn't address it.
Yeah. Pardon me?
They didn't address it in terms of what happens after you clear it.
No. Well, we're showing erosion control. We're showing the plan shows an erosion control barrier.
I still don't know what's happening if there's a slope there. And if there is a slope, I'd like to know how much it is, what the final slope will be, and how it will be dressed so it's safe and stable, so it doesn't erode into the wetland area. That's a normal thing that you would ask for any site plan.
It depends what's there, how steep the slope is there. There is no slope, let's be clear.
All right. Charlie, what do you recommend for this plan?
I'd just like to see the detail of what's happening between the limits of the existing paving and the limits of clearing that are at the 50-foot wetland setback.
Alright, how about the front?
I don't have a problem with what's there so long as it's been, it's gonna be controlled along the line of that easement with the barrels.
Yep.
So there can be no access out of that secondary access, and they'll be forced to go out into the existing driveways on their property. They've taken away the, the barrier so that now you can get at this new parking area from their other property, which is what we discussed at the last public meeting.
Alright, who's Mr. Stella, the engineer, Mrs. Stella? Is it possible you could work out these details with Mr. Charlie and come back for next hearing? And we could wrap it up? And hopefully we could get a clear, like, nice agreement on that?
Yeah, we need some, can I ask, is it possible that?
You could pack on it, nobody's stopping you, no?
No, no, what I'm asking though, is it possible that we can, we can get, we can get approval, and then condition it so everything meets, would be?
Yeah, but.
I don't know what I'm recommending approval for.
You have to do closing on something, or, I mean, you need approval for financial, for something?
No, 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 not, not, I'm just saying that, I mean, just to speed the process, it's all, yeah, that's all. But I mean, if, if you want us to come.
I'll tell you what, if you work out with Charlie all the details, and Charlie next hearing tells us you worked out the details, you guys don't even have to come here. We could act on it without you being here.
I just want you to know, I'm only acting as your consultant.
Right.
If I see something that I don't agree with, I'm gonna say I'm not gonna give the approval, and you'll be forced to come back, because.
No, we'll decide, we, we would like your recommendation, we'll see what's fair and what's not fair, the board will decide.
I'll do the best I can to work with, with the site engineer and come up with a plan.
Identify for us the things you don't agree on, and we'll let the board decide. If they, if the board agrees with you, fine, if they don't.
Oh, that's fine, I have no problem with that.
Right.
I just don't want to get in the position of acting on the board's where you had the authority to make the final decision.
We really appreciate where you don't, where you show us what's not right, and we'll let us decide, it'll be on us to decide. So we'd like us, we'd like you to show us this. So how's that sound?
I'll certainly work with him, and we'll have the recommendations so that you'll be able to see it the next time.
What is he working on?
He's gonna work on a few details of what he asked.
Not the entrance.
Not the entrance.
The concern is erosion control, is that correct?
No, maybe on the front, too.
It's more than that.
Okay. Okay.
It's what happens within the cleared area that they're proposing, because it's my understanding, the only thing they got from conservation was the authority to clear within 100 feet of a wetland. There was no stipulations as to whether there's any slopes involved, what the slope will be, or what the slope stabilization will be. I don't know at this point if when you park cars against that slope, if they're gonna roll off without some protection. I can't tell by this plan.
Okay, very well, so, let's, let's go forward.
It is not my, I mean, it's all vegetation, so overgrown and it's really hard to tell how, but it's, it's not very steep at all, nor excessively steep. The whole thing goes into a wetland, which is all flat anyway.
Okay, so, so hopefully you work it out, and we hear from him. Charlie, if you let us know a couple of days prior, the hearing, so if.
As, as soon as I get the information and have had a chance to review it, I will email Ken and yourself.
Just let us know so we can review it before we come here.
Right.
And, and then we go from there, and you don't have to come all the way, all of you, next time, maybe one person, or you don't even have to. Alright?
Thank you.
Okay, so can we, we continue to August 8?
So moved.
Do I have a second to continue 17-18 to August 8? RM, RM Realty, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, present, see you then, thank, thank you, gentlemen. Alright, 2-18, Dakota Partners.
Jim Buckland, has this got anything to do with this thing, is this out of this, oh yeah, Patricia Wells is involved in here. Let's just get everything back in the right folder. Is there anything, oh yeah, there's more. Is there more? Hey, you're back, how you feeling?
I am feeling great, thank you very much for asking, and last time as well.
Thank you. Good, good, that's good. Every once in a while, our body tells us to take a rest, doesn't it?
And you have to listen, that's right, you have to listen.
Show you me doing right. I show you something, I talk there. I, I don't either, but I get close. Okay, very well, sorry. What's the matter with you? Yeah, okay. Alright, very well. Everybody's here? I know, it's the rules. Very well, where you going, Cal? Okay, Dakota Partners, 3102 Cranberry Highway, public hearing is open, let's hear it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board Members. For the record, Peter Freeman, Freeman Law Group, representing the applicant, Jim O'Brien, we're very glad to say, is here with us from Dakota. And as you know, Dom Rinaldi, our engineer from BSC. So what we'd like to do, like to do, is to have Dom go over the more detailed plans. You had seen them in more of a preliminary conceptual stage last time. We know that we didn't submit them in time for you folks to really review, certainly not for any town staff review or peer review yet, although we hope to, if you want that, move to that quickly. But we want to go over those details, which, which Dom will do, and also, as part of his presentation, really just give you updates as we see it on the big-ticket items, which would be the discussions, both through reports and Dom's own discussions with the Water Department and with SURE. In a general way, I'll just say, we believe that we're almost there. On the water, I don't know if we had feedback on the monitoring, which seems to be the only open question, Dom can get into that. And on the sewer, I believe the report from the consultant clearly says that there really are no capacity issues or issues of that type, pipes or anything like that. I believe that the way they phrased it, how they're questioning I and I, and what types of fees, and all of that, which in the, from the get-go, from our initial discussions, and Jim can chime in on that in a bit if necessary, that we always said, you know, we would pay what the town is, is charging on any project for those types of fees. So, I think those are the highlights, and so with that, I'll have Dom go over things, if that's okay.
Sure.
Dominic Rinaldi with the BSC Group, the engineers and surveyors for the project. The plan you have before you, and I do have five full-size, and I think you asked for 14, 11 by 17.
11 by 17, correct.
We make sure the young guy gets to carry the heavy stuff.
Well, the good news is this gets sent electronically.
Yeah, that's right.
And I got a good chance to review it.
Alright, good.
Charlie, have you had a chance to go over this? No, not at all.
So, the, the plan there is essentially the same plan we presented last time, just fleshed out into a full design compared to, was a little more conceptual before. The idea is, it's, we've reduced the project to five buildings, 150 units total. The buildings have moved towards the inside of the site, and the parking and driveways have moved towards the outside of the site. So the, the parking driveways is just one continuous U-loop from, depending on which way you're coming, from Cranberry Highway around the back of the site and onto Redbrook Road. Recreational space is centered in the middle, sort of, call it effectively the backyards of, of the residential buildings. The community building footprint has been revised a little bit, it's same, same total size, just a little bit of a different shape. And we've actually shifted that just a little bit north away from the, the front edge of, of the property there. We have a total of 264 spaces in this, in this version, which is actually, interestingly enough, four more spaces than the previous version, which comes to a ratio of about 1.76 spaces per unit. We have, in, in the plans, you will see, we have fleshed out the utilities, similar concept to what we were doing before, just slightly different locations and fewer units. And the stormwater management grading, as well as the landscape. It's, it's fairly straightforward, we have, I don't know if you want to talk about that before we get into, we've gotten peer reviews.
The what?
We've gotten peer reviews back from, since we last met, from GHD, representing the Sewer Department.
I'd just like to know who's still hung there, so I know the sewer said they have capacity. So the water, you're only talking about the, what's still hanging there is the monitoring water.
At the last hearing, Mr. Hughes and his consultant, Sean O'Brien, I believe his name is.
Sean, right.
Yeah. Had said they were coming up with a revised potential groundwater monitoring plan to present to us. They had sort of presented the, sort of generalized outline of it, but they have not finalized that and gotten it back to us.
Have you talked to them when they're gonna?
Talked to them, yes, and, and they actually do have a copy of, of this plan.
Did I tell you when they're gonna finalize?
They didn't seem to have a.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, just quick interruption, I just noticed that one member, I can't remember if she is a.
Just for the, yeah, I, I did mention earlier that Mr. Morrison was here before, and.
Yeah, I thought so, so as long as, is five.
And we did talk about the Mullen Rule, which is Mr. Baptiste, he did review the minutes, actually, I saw him coming to his office.
Right.
Cal, you testified you did read the minutes, right?
Yeah.
Remember, he was missing the hearing, and we said the Mullen, we did adopt the Mullen Rule.
Right.
Okay?
Yeah.
And Jake, were you here last hearing?
Yes.
He was here last hearing.
And you've been through, I think, all the hearings?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, and that's fine, I just want to make sure.
It was only Cal's thing, and you did mention about the Mullen Rule last time, correct? Correct, okay. Go ahead, proceed.
Yep, since we last met, we received July 6, 2018, review from GHD on behalf of the Sewer Department, which as you said, they've, they've verified that the lines between the site and the plant and the two pump stations actually do indeed have the capacity to handle the flows from this site. And this, for the right, was also, was done under the 174-unit project, so with, obviously with the reduced unit count, it's a slight, it's a reduced impact.
Just another thing to clarify, most likely we don't come to a vote tonight, if well much, next hearing she's here, and she testified to the minute, she could jump back in. Okay?
Right, again, if she goes through the tape of the minutes.
Right, if she testified, she reads, she read them and everything, she kept back in. It would be your option to pick between her or Jake, seriously, it's the applicant option, so.
Okay, well, you know, I'll go with what Pa recommends, or you. I don't want to offend anybody.
Yeah, alright, so, apparently Charlie then reviewed those plans, right?
No, it's the first time I've seen him.
Okay, so apparently we need some time to have these things reviewed. So, so you said the only thing, we're waiting to hear from water?
On the monitoring only, they've confirmed under the 174-unit plan that the, the water capacity is efficient.
That's right, they did say that.
Obviously, one less building, 24 superunits.
Did the sewer send you anything in writing confirming everything?
Yeah.
There was that report from July 10, was it?
From July 6.
Alright, Ken, if I may, have you guys had any town meeting with people with some recommendation since then? Manual, or administrator, or other people?
Yes, we have.
Okay, what would you guys recommend? Or what did you guys find out, whatever?
We recommend some, basically the idea is that we're accepting that, that this is a project that is approvable because of the requirements of the state, say, we don't have the 10%. So, accepting that this project has to proceed, what is the best kind of amenities we could put in here to make this a highly livable, really nice part of, of the town?
Okay.
So, things like shuttle bus stop, shelter.
Okay. Shuttle bus stop for the bus, like, like the little shelter?
Yeah, a bus shelter.
Yeah.
That each building provides storage for renters and laundry facilities. The complex provide.
But let's go one at a time, these have storage? These apartments have storage for the, for the renters? And laundry facilities?
They have laundry facilities, but no storage.
No storage?
Per unit or laundry facilities shared?
I don't know, actually, I have to find that out.
Let me ask a question I want to ask before. Air conditioning, you said this unit is gonna be including, including hot water and heat, right?
Jim, did you hear that last question about heating?
One minute, let's wait for him to get back on record. Alright, so we, the question I was asking, I remember you said last time it was included, including the rent, including heat and hot water.
Yes.
You have one massive boiler for the whole place probably, right?
Yes.
Now, about air conditioning, how's that gonna work?
So we don't have to supply air conditioning, if we do, it's an electric component that would be on the tenant's electric utility bill. If we have an individual system, it would be within the individual system. If we have a circulating central plant, there would be a separate system put above each unit that they could access. At this point, we haven't designed the mechanicals to that degree.
Okay, my question is, is it gonna be AC in the windows, exposed?
No.
Okay, so it'll be.
We don't allow that. I think there's something, or maybe.
You'll have like an air handler type, right?
Like a mini-split or something like that?
Yeah, exactly.
If we do any AC, it'll be a mini-split only.
Okay, so you, you have an air handler in each unit, it's like, it's not the force air, it's hydro air.
Exactly.
And you could add a condenser or whatever.
Right.
Okay, very well. So, next thing about the bus shelter, what's the other thing you guys recommended?
Can we, can we go back to your air conditioning just for one second? Hydro air, is that like a cooling tower and a pipe circulating through the buildings, is that what that is?
No, hydro air is the smaller tubes of the smaller HVAC ducts that then have a high-speed and low-speed fan.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's all when they represent hydro air.
It's, it's, it's a split mini.
Yeah, it's a split mini system.
And where, where would the outside unit component of that go, on the roof, on the ground?
The condensers, if we have those, are usually outside. We usually have, in this particular building design, because we have a flat roof up top, we could put them up on the flat roof, behind the gables, correct.
It looks like a peak roof, but there's a flat part.
Yes, yeah, it comes up as a gable, and then it flattens right off, and that's where we have most of the mechanicals.
Thank you.
Yep, but hydro air operates of hot water, it's like, you know what I'm saying, that's where it comes from?
Yeah, that's, that's why I asked if it was a tower, or is it?
Right, alright. Okay, so what's, what else?
So, the idea of a, the bus shelter on Cranberry Highway, in each building, to provide storage for renters and laundry facilities for the renters. In the complex in total, provide a manager and a manager's office onsite. Consider one building for seniors only. Have an indoor fitness room. Have an indoor children's playroom. Have workforce office space for the tenants. In the community room, to provide a reading room, kitchen for demonstrations and catering, computer lab, cyber cafe, to activate the open space with lawn furniture, exercise sites, gardens with water.
Okay, did you, did you send them an email on that?
No, not yet.
Okay.
Just dropped this off this afternoon.
Alright. Just by Mr. Buckland reading this, what do you think? What's feasible?
I'm sure Jim will want to chime in too. Some of it is physical, what's available, there may well be space, there are already a plan for a manager's office. Some of the other things, I really just don't know. One thing I know I can respond to, it just really cannot work legally under the fair housing laws. You can't just have one building in a development under the same ownership, be age restricted. It wouldn't comply with the fair housing laws, which is federal, of course, as well as state. And it also is a marketing thing, which I don't think, a marketing end, state approval of the tax credits, to a virtual certainty, I don't think that DHCD would approve that, aside from the fair housing problem. So, on the other points, I couldn't, here, you said something about workforce, were you talking about a workforce office space, or did you say workforce units?
Office space.
Yeah.
For training.
Yeah. Again, I mean.
If I may, office space for what?
For, for workforce, for workforce training and. For, for workforce, for workforce training and job.
Okay.
So they could use a community room for that, right?
It could.
A community building?
Yeah, I mean, that's the first thought. You beat me to it, but, you know, again, Jim is, we're all just hearing it for the first time.
How big is that community building? Thirty, what is it? Thirty-five?
3,348 square feet.
Like, what do you think dedicating 12 by 12 room for that?
Mr. Chairman, if I might, within your package, you have the floor plan of the community room and it shows a, of the entire community building, it shows a community room.
Sorry, Jim, can I just, it's not in the package you just got, it's in the package you got in January.
From January, our original submission.
All right.
So it has a fitness center, storage, men's and ladies' room. It has the utility rooms, a large community room, a lobby area. It has one, two, three, four offices as well. And within those offices, we have a property manager, we run socialized programs and things of that nature. So this meets all the criteria of the state requirements. And then we exceed that. We may only need about 1,800 square feet. This is 3,300. So we actually build a pretty big community room. But it is in your packages from January, if you want to take a look at it.
Ken, were you, do you recall this? That plan?
Yes. It doesn't specify all the functions that we're talking about.
Okay, can we designate it on the plan? That's what you want? You want the plan designated like function room?
Yeah.
Workforce room, training room. That's what you want? What you like to see?
But they can have multiple.
Exactly. Yeah, we use the community room, Mr. Chairman, which, as you can see, is almost half of the building itself. And we use that for multi-function. So that's how we run the, the community itself.
What do you mean by workforce? If someone came in, a company came in and was looking to hire people, they can go in there and, is that what, what do you mean?
Yeah, job clearing site, yeah.
I think they can use the community room to that.
Yeah, we do. We run-
Other developments, use their community room.
Chairman, if I might suggest, if Ken can send a copy of this, an email to the applicant, perhaps they can actually detail-
Address it, yeah.
You know, how they can address each-
That's probably a good idea.
Yeah.
If you could email them the copy and they could address each one so they have an answer for us next time. And maybe you could CC us too.
Absolutely.
Sure. That, that makes sense. And in one thing, although Jim can comment more in response when we get the email, but it sounds like there is space for most of those things in terms of office space and the fitness room is already there, et cetera, manager's office. You know, on a workforce thing, although it sounds like Dakota may provide voluntarily certain programs to assist the residents, I don't think it would be appropriate to mandate a condition that we provide some type of workforce training because that goes above and beyond what, you know, development is and what the permitting is. So, you know, Jim, you can just think about that and you can describe what you, what you sometimes do at these facilities. But just for now, rhetorical, just, you know, maybe hard to commit to it as a condition, not to have the space available. It appears that the space is likely available.
But if a business wanted to, you know, have a job fit?
Mm-hmm.
It could set up in the-
Exactly. Work with the community, be it, you know, employment counselors or whatever the town agencies are that deal, absolutely. Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah.
Yes.
I just want to go right off the record a little bit. When was the last time you guys here, on the 27?
I think it was June 27th. June 27th, yes.
All right, just, Jim, Ken, just for the record, Jake wasn't here on 27. You weren't here on 27, were you?
I wasn't here on 27.
Right, but if you recall, so in the next hearing, Wilma has to testify to the minute unless Jake can testify to the minutes of the 24th of the 27.
Well, two things. I mean, I apologize, I don't remember the, your other female member's name, but she's pretty sure been at everything until tonight.
Wilma, she was here for sure.
Right, right. So she, if she can make the next hearing, could read. But I don't know, and Paul, maybe you know about how this Mullen's rule and the open meeting law work. I don't know if he would have had to read the minutes or the transcript or view the tape prior to tonight, or if it's just sufficient to do it before the close of the hearing. I don't know. Yeah.
But regardless, she could come back in-
Yes.
In the next hearing. Then you have five more minutes.
Right, right.
Because he wasn't here, that's the 27, but Jake, were you here last time?
Yes.
You were here. Well, I don't have you on, on the agenda.
The minutes were reflected. It can be easily researched.
All right, why don't we continue? We'll check the minutes.
Who checked for the 27?
27.
We checked for the 27.
Jake wasn't here.
He wasn't here.
So he wasn't here. And you guys, and they were here, right? So Jake and Carl wasn't here.
He wasn't. Right here. He wasn't. 27.
All right, so he wasn't here last time. So next time, you have Wilma, okay? He wasn't here. All right, very good. Sorry.
It's all right. Thank you.
Let's continue. I just want to make sure so there's no legal issues after.
Yeah.
All right. All right.
So, Mr. Chairman, I also met with the fire department and the fire chief signed a plan that he asked us and those changes have been incorporated in this set that you're reviewing. So we went over in detail access. He asked for more grasscrete access to the clubhouse, extension of some grasscrete we had there. We have five fire hundreds now versus three located where they wanted. So all that's been attended to and he gracefully gave me a signature last week on that. And we turned that plan into, and these plans reflect those changes.
Okay. If I, if you just, again, I'm sorry. Jake, if, I know you had an emergency, if you want to leave, so you could leave. If you, if you have to.
Yeah, I'll, I'll-
If you have to leave, you could, I mean, I know you had some-
I'm always getting put at the house right now, so.
Yeah, so, I mean, you don't have to hang up. Thank you. Thanks a lot, Jake. Just for the record, Mr. Morrison leaves the meeting. All right, so we were, I'm sorry, sorry about the confusion, but there's no sense. I know you had an emergency and there's no sense in being here.
No, it's okay. I understood.
So, so I guess what we have to do for last, next time, Charlie to review these plans. So come back with some final comments in engineering and hopefully by then we hear from the water department.
Yep.
Ken, you're going to have to email those comments you guys did as a community. And they're going to respond to them. And just going to ask the board member, what do you think, Jim? What do you have something to add for them?
Not at the moment.
No, Carl. Nothing. Jim?
No comments, no questions. Charlie, what do you want?
While Mr. Freeman's here, could I ask him a question?
Sure.
I'm looking at sheet SV1, which I assume is the plan that divides the property now into three different lots than what was shown previously.
Yes, it's, just for the record, it's still four lots, including the one that is not being developed as part of.
Yeah, I wasn't even thinking about that. I was thinking about the configuration of lots 1, 2, and 3. Mr. Freeman, you made a comment that you could not designate one building for elderly housing. Lot 3 only has one building, but you said it could not be under the same ownership. Are you planning to have all lots 1, 2, and 3 under the same ownership or are they different?
You're right that one of the things that Jim said initially is that it may be that there are not the same LLCs that own it because of the tax credits and it could be separate. But we don't know that for sure at this time, number one. Number two, as I said, in addition to the fair housing issue, frankly, it's not what we proposed and it wouldn't make any really significant change to, you know, the project impacts, at least in areas that, you know, are within 40B purview, which to be blunt means, you know, school impact is not within 40B purview. The other thing, though, is I'm really very skeptical that DHCD would even approve an age-restricted, you know, rental. They usually require, you know, if at all, many more, you know, a couple of things, many more detailed marketing studies. And it would probably remove any possibility of going forward with DHCD in the next round of tax credits, which the applications have to be in the end of October. So it's just a non-starter for us.
I know that one of the, one of the things which came up at the meeting, which Ken alluded to, was that in order to make it a family-oriented development, it's nice to include elderly along with kids because there is a good relationship between, that can result from that. They don't necessarily want to live in the same building with two or three screaming kids, but they like, they like to be in close proximity. So that was what prompted my question, especially with respect to the lot configuration and from what I read in the original documents about there being three separate entities and the fact that they weren't all going to be purchased at the same time by the same individual.
I understand, but nonetheless, you know, what we said is legit. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, the project was not approved as an age-restricted project via the issuance
of the project eligibility letter by DHCD. My experience is that subsidizing agencies are very, very reluctant to allow age-restricted projects to move forward under chapter 40B nowadays. It used to be 10, 15 years ago that, you know, every third project, every age-restricted project. And subsidizing agencies saw that a lot of those permits were then being subject to modifications to eliminate age restrictions. So now they require a great deal of information at the start of the process to justify the need for an age restriction on a project. So they're very reluctant to grant an eligibility letter for age restriction and they haven't in this instance. So I have to agree with the amendment that the board would not be allowed to impose
Yeah, which is name.
A condition requiring an age restriction because the subsidizing agency has not authorized it.
Okay, so, yeah, we won't get any other.
I do have a couple more questions if I could. I know that one planning board member who presented the modification of the plan, which you've sort of replicated here on your sheet, had made some suggestions about the, the long, continuous, straight walls of each of the buildings. Are you still going to address that in the architecture?
We did look at that internally and the answer is no and not, you know, out of, you know, artificially drawing a line in the sand. But, you know, it does not seem as though the planning board had really seen the actual detailed architectural plans because even several of the members of the zoning board commented when we pulled them out and looked at them last time that actually they were not long, monotonous, supermassive buildings, that there was a lot of ebb and flow and gables and ins and outs which give that relief to an otherwise admittedly long building, but the buildings are going to be the same size. And Jim, you can put them up again or put them up?
I just did.
So, so we're honestly, again, respectful of that, of that thought, but we believe that these absolutely already meet that standard. So, you know.
And if I can comment, what, what they were looking at was the plan view, which is just how we do it. Maybe everybody doesn't. When we draw the plan view of the building, we basically draw the outermost projection down to the ground. So that box, while it may look very rectangular, is just because if you went to the outermost projection at any given point in the building and went straight down, that's where the line comes out.
That, that plan that you show right there shows some very minor ins and outs that you can see on these buildings, but if you look at the back of the buildings, it's a solid, straight line. Are you suggesting that the backs also have those jogs in them?
No, he's not.
No. And that's typical of any building, you know, it's the front, the front that, you know, you look at.
The only other question I had at this point was with respect to the community building. There's no parking for that building. And if there's no parking there, where would their parking be for people that might use that on a regular basis, even though they might be limited? I see that emergency access, but you certainly don't want to complicate that because the fire department is going to expect that that'll be clear for their use. So if you needed to have somebody get in there or somebody that was handicapped but wanted to drive to the site to get there?
How do they get there? And where do they park?
As we've said before, the parking isn't designated to any given building on the site. The parking is for the site. And as Mr. Rowley brought up at the previous hearing when we presented the concept, we have since provided a handicap space next to the, the main walkway to the community building that while not designated for the, for the community building is an additional handicap space that we don't need by regulation to provide in case somebody did want to drive over there from another spot.
Is there parking there for the manager? Is there a manager parking there? Is, are they just going to take up another spot?
Yes.
Let me ask a question. How far is the community building from parking lot, walking distance, roughly? This is not scaled, but just roughly. That's what I do usually.
Give or take.
You know, but 150 feet, that's a long way for a handicap to walk on somebody in canes. So I think we should somehow, I do agree with Charlie and Carl, should have some parking in front of it. Say you have a handicap person on canes or something, how are they going to walk 150 feet? It's pretty far. Maybe some parking in the community center and, and some parking for delivery truck, FedEx, GPS.
There is parking for a delivery truck.
Yeah, we added that, Mr. Chairman, on the, right in front of that community building walkway.
That shaded area?
Yes.
Yes.
So that's for delivery truck?
All packages will actually be delivered to the leasing office in the community building. So that's why that's located there, so that they can get out.
I do, I do-
Bring out whatever they need straight to the community building.
You're going to leave the packages to the community building and the people have to come and get it?
Yeah, they put a key in there, a note in there. Each building has a set of mailboxes in it. Then they'll tell them there's a package waiting.
Who controls that?
The post office.
That's what I was saying. Who controls the package?
In the, in the community building, we have actually a postal center. So the post office puts it there and then puts the key in.
I thought you were leaving it. You don't-
No, no, no.
Couldn't end up with the proper order.
Right, right.
All right.
In the back of that building where the shrub is, there's no way to put parking back there? Downwater. Yeah, yeah. I don't know this half.
You know, Mr. Chairman, we have set this up in almost every community we have where the community building is centralized for a reason. And we added additional sidewalks all the way around so everybody could access it as they need to. Every sidewalk is ADA compliant as we build it. And if they decide that they want to be on the side of building A and walk down that side sidewalk, they can, or adjacent to building D. We really don't prefer parking in front of our clubhouse. We don't like the look of all that asphalt. We prefer the landscape softness of people enjoying that as more of a green area.
I understand.
And we have a property manager there. If anyone needs any additional care or any attention, we have someone there to help.
All right. I just want to go back to the question Charlie did ask about the look in the building. Do you have any architectural plans for the backside of the building?
A rendering of the back?
Yeah, just like this?
We have elevations and building footprints in the sets that were submitted in January.
This is the parking side?
This would, yes, it'll be the parking side.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be tied in, of course, with a hole facing the village green and, you know, naturally giving the, you know.
Now, I like the, this facade, but I'm just like what Charlie says. I would like to see the backside of the building.
So here, Mr. Chairman, in your packages, you have the rear of the building that has the, I'm sorry, I don't want to take Ken's setup.
That's from our original, that's from the original.
It should be, yes.
Yes. Yeah.
That's the back?
P2, yeah, P20. So we have decks, we have trim products, we have a change in facades.
What page is it?
Material differences. It's P24.
And that's the courtyard side?
That's right.
Oh, okay. Charlie, did you see that? It's not bad.
Well, architecturally, we like to break everything up with materials and it costs a lot of money to add all of those features, but it's similar to the front.
Is the gable, meaning the house was extended?
No, we have decks and different materials. Yeah. So just the colors and the changes in materials add a dynamic piece to it.
Yeah.
It does, it does seem that there's an awful lot of, how do I say this? When you look at the roof lines and the way that the building has been put together, there's an awful lot of intricate gables and roofs that are there.
The fuck did I do with my pen?
That complicate the cost of construction, it seems to me. Whereas just having one solid line with a few different colors here and there doesn't really break up the fact that it's a straight line. You're going to see that straight line no matter where you look.
I know, but they, they do, I believe it's not bad looking. It's a lot of, a lot of- I know, but they do, I believe it's not bad looking, it's a lot of, a lot of design to it. I don't know.
I mean, the decks and the trim and all of the features.
I don't believe you can get the impact of what it's going to look like by looking at a elevation view like that. It doesn't give you the perspective you need to see what it looks like.
Yeah, but you got a pretty good idea. It shows a lot of variation, and it's not just a straight line if you talk about the gables.
For reference, when you look at the plans, the plan view, what we refer to as their, it's a patio slash deck that bumps out the bath. That is, they come all the way up, they're a solid feature. They're not just a patio that sits out or a balcony that sits out. That's a solid building feature of the roof. And the rest of it sits back, and there's ramps within the building, the different floors.
Those decks and stuffs do stick out five, six feet.
It is broken up, in my experience, very consistently with how things are done in architecturally nowadays.
And again, Mr. Rowley is focusing on the civil drawings, which do show it straight for a different reason, because we have to use the largest projectile to figure our offsets and stuff.
I'm not strictly looking at that. I was looking at it from this, but I know that there was a concern on part of one of the planning board members with respect to how the buildings looked, and he was trying to.
If I may, I don't believe that the planning board member ever actually saw, he seemed to be surprised by the renderings when we showed them at the last meeting. So I don't believe he's ever seen the architectural plans.
Anyway, looks of the building will be this board jurisdiction, anyway. So anyway, let's continue on other stuff. So like I said, most importantly, we want to look at the calcs and everything else that Charlie's going to look at, and we'll wait to hear from the water department and final water department. So we want to push everybody, give us final answers next time.
I've had a conversation with the water consultant.
Ben, the chairman?
Yes. Sean.
Well, Sean is what Ben asked him to do.
Sean Osborne.
Yeah.
Right, he's the consultant.
Right, but we want to get a final answer from them.
Right.
Okay.
And we'll get that answer.
All right.
And we also want an answer from, do we want an answer from tech, tech traffic consultant in response?
Didn't he draft something?
He did, and they responded to it. Do you want a follow-up?
Do you want a response to the response?
Yeah, we do. Did you have a respond on it?
He did.
We did. We responded. We feel the traffic issue has been resolved in our eyes. I don't know how much more we can do. Mr. Rowley has looked at the traffic, then we had our own traffic report, we then authorized a consultant to look at it, and we have responded to that consultant, so.
Has the consultant responded to your response?
No. I mean, but we gave it to him over a month ago, so. No, the, our contract did not apply to a secondary review, so we would need more funds in the 53G account to pay for.
To get a final review from him?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we had a review by email today that they have responded to.
Okay.
I read it.
Are there outstanding issues?
I think we should, I think we should all review their response before we impose anything else.
Yeah, I've reviewed it today.
I don't know, since I don't know the response to the, it wasn't a discussion between the engineers. It was just a written response.
Paul, what are you asking? Let's keep this like publicly.
Asking if there are any significant traffic questions that require another round of review.
Is there any?
I didn't think so. I felt so.
Give me your response.
You know, when you get to it.
The court was based on 174 units rather than 150, so any concerns are only minimized rather than increased.
Correct, correct.
So I mean, I think we, I think the public should review the most recent TEC letter to see if there was anything outstanding, and then whether or not they've addressed it. And if there are any issues that seem like they require further response, then I think we should refer that to TEC.
From what I, from what I recall, most of the responses were noting that action had been taken.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the response of BSC did put in TEC's statement, and then we put our response in bold. So it might be something that the board wants to look at, because we've clearly identified things like they've requested two sidewalks around the entire site, we're not going to do that. So I don't know how much more there is to respond to that, other than we've got a circulating sidewalk all the way around the site, connects through 53 and Red Brook Road. You know, we don't feel that's something that needs to be belabored any further if the board doesn't. I don't, we're not going to add secondary sidewalks all the way around the site, it's just redundant. I don't think sidewalks were the big issue.
What's the big issue?
The traffic on Red Brook Road and the turning movements.
Which one was that?
Yeah.
Who's that a big issue with?
What was that?
Which, which, which part?
Which one is it? Jeff, which, which one?
Here's the main one.
I didn't, I didn't see any.
No, I think our traffic consultant last time discussed the fact that, you know, we outlined our case, that it didn't make sense to do that no left turn or whatever they had recommended, because we had a separate egress on the Cranbury Highway side. So I don't know why that's still an issue in respect to, there's no regulatory or compliance issue that we've need to correct.
Yeah, I think part of the discussion was, and, you know, it was noted in the June 6, the initial tech report as to, you know, turning movements, full movement driveway, you know, that we proposed on Red Brook Road, it commented a little bit, and then Colleen Maderas's response, McMahon, let her head, our consultant, McMahon Transportation Engineers, she basically explained it, it was comment six. And my recollection from the discussion is that, you know, I think your consultant might have said, well, you know, it does address it, he maybe still had some thoughts, I don't want to say he said 100% okay. But I believe that there was some discussion that this is really going to be worked out in detail with the, you know, MassDOT, you know, changes there. And if they're okay with it, I know the board, you probably recall, several members said, you know, to members of the audience, that, you know, ultimately, if MassDOT approves it, they approve it, and they're not going to approve something that's unsafe. So that's why we felt as though no more attention to that is needed.
And, Mr. Chairman, that's very important. After your decision, it will, I imagine, involve a condition that says subject to MassDOT approval. We will file with MassDOT.
Yeah, absolutely.
Go through all the circulation and access, and whatever they tell us to do, we will do.
All right. Ken, you want to, you want to add anything else on this? Like, what's, on that respond?
I think they dealt with the, with the, you know, stacking and backing up and.
Yes, and we did also, we added the truck delivery, and we also added the bulk storage area next to the dumpster, for mattresses and such.
What's the answer the fire department come up with, that we're fine for the circulation with the truck?
Yes, we did a full truck circulation, backup turnaround, and they asked us to use a large vehicle from another town that we templated with. So we've used the largest vehicle possible and have met the guidelines.
Okay. All right.
For the record, we thought that you have it, but Ken, do you have the one you want to go show them? It's the one that's marked up with the okay's by the fire chief?
Yes, we do. We sent that by email, yep. Yeah, we do have it electronically.
Okay.
So we all sat with the fire department?
Yes.
Okay, let's take a quick moment to go to the audience. Who wants to speak? Just come forward, ma'am. Ladies first. Yeah, we just, if you don't mind, it's getting late, we want something new information, not to repeat, we already know what you said before, but maybe some.
Well, they repeated some things, so I'm going to say what I want to say. Lucille Dodson, what I am hearing is that there are concerns, we in the neighborhood that live in this area, if cars are trying to come out onto Head of the Bay Road, Red Brook Road, from this development, it would be very difficult, and it would be very congested to allow left-hand turns right out there. And since this projected project is so close to where that loon is going to be, it should be no left turn going out onto Head of the Bay. They should be able to, if they want to come out, fine, but it should not be left-hand turns there. Not to mention, one thing nobody has ever really discussed here is I have a vision, with 7-Eleven being so close to this vicinity, and all these children, you know, they're going to be, nobody's going to be hitting a button and walking in a crosswalk to cross. They're going to be, ooh, I want an ice cream, oh, I want a drink, oh, I want gum, oh, I want whatever. There's going to be kids going back and forth and back and forth a lot. And I am concerned, very much so, for any children that are going to be going across. And cars are not used to all these kids traveling back and forth there. It's going to be, I can see, I can already see accidents, people breaking this, that, whatever, for kids darting back and forth. Those things need to be addressed, because those are real concerns. I'm not making this stuff up. And I think if you lived there, you could see for yourself, that these things are very, very much in concern. And so that needs to be taken in consideration. And one thing I would like Ken to add into his list is that there is a fence, like I have said in the past, I am very concerned for onset water wells, and that there needs to be a fence at least six foot high, if not higher, with no gate access, that surrounds this whole property, so that kids, again, they don't have much, they don't have yards to play in, they have maybe this little area. It hasn't even been, the last we met, you wanted two playgrounds. That was never even discussed tonight, whether or not they even added two playgrounds to this area. And so we all know, kids are, you know, they're bored, they get mischief, whatever. If there's no fence to protect the wells back there, it's all woods, kids, that's going to be drawing kids to it, to want to go back there. All that land is restricted. Who's going to be guarding that to make sure the wells are not being damaged and whatever? That is a very, very big concern, and that needs to be addressed, and that needs to be in writing, that they do this. And it needs to be up to the sides and around, so that kids can't just go around and get back there. That is, that is a number one, very big concern, along with the safety of children going across, and even cars. You know, I can see rear-end collisions, because kids darting and people are not used to, these things are just necessary to really, really think about. So again, I need, you know, I want to see these things in writing. And I know it was a little bit discussed, but, and I know it's probably too late and whatever now, but why can't this whole project, we all know, like, I thought that was a great idea about the senior, we all know that that is also missing in this community. Why can't this whole project go that way? It would take the school financial drain off the town.
That's nonsense, you can't talk, I mean, it doesn't, that's not what the application's, it's not a 55 and over, so.
But anyways.
I do agree with you with the fence around the property, that makes sense.
And no access, no gates to open or whatever, and it needs to be a high fence, not some four little foot fence somewhere that a kid can hop over.
Maybe a chain link, six foot.
No, no chain link. A chain link, kids can easily put their phone, their feet in there and climb over.
Any fence would go, any fence would be put with.
Nobody's there, so nobody, it's not enticing. You're talking about in a condensed area, at least 300 kids, all of a sudden are there. Think about it.
Anyway.
Right now, there's not 300 kids sitting around there.
Would a crosswalk be better?
A crosswalk where?
From their property to 7-Eleven?
You know the kids aren't going to do that, they're just going to be darting, they're going to be darting.
It's going to stop traffic a little also, because you're.
But the point is, the point is, is look at the traffic, that's going to be concerns. It's not just shrug your shoulders, it's going to happen. It's a stupid idea. It is going to affect all these kinds of things. Mark my words. You'll be reading about it in the paper in the future.
I'm sure it'll be affecting something, but unfortunately.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Debbie Edo. So fence was on my list, too. High enough not to be easily climbed over. Traffic's also on the list. Not just, not just the traffic, because that one corner is going to be so extremely congested with the turnarounds, with the lights, with the 7-Eleven, with the entrance and exit into the whatever, but even inside for the community room. So say if there's a christening or birthday party, and there's 30 to 50 guests, and then all that parking and all that traffic, and is the parking going to be sufficient inside to provide enough with the tenants there as well? There's also, and I know last time this was mentioned, that at the beginning of this process, there was a number of 106 units mentioned.
174.
I don't understand why it's up to 100, only going down to 150, and it can't be negotiated any lower than that.
The application was 174.
I know it was 174, but at one point there was, I don't know if it was a question about profitability or what it was, but there was 106 units mentioned, that that should be the bottom line, by the developers. And now they won't go below 150. The bus stops, is, would the bus stop be on Cranbury Highway itself, and would there be a curve-in, so that would be out of traffic, or would it be stopping traffic on Cranbury Highway?
Well, that's got to be, I mean, I don't think, it's got to be, we have, we have to pick a good spot and put it most likely on Red Brook Road, not Cranbury Highway.
Of course, so more congestion on Red Brook Road, the way to go. Also, are there any, on the buildings, outside restrictions? Are people going to be able to have dishes for cable out there? Is laundry going to be hanging out on the patios? I mean, are there any restrictions on it?
Land does not allow to have hanging laundries outside, I don't think, it's against the law. If somebody does it, and it's, don't we have a, now bylaws, you can't have a laundry line outside?
I don't know.
I believe, I believe the development has.
We will, we will put, we'll put conditions, but if somebody hangs laundry, what are you going to do, send them to cops?
No, I'm just curious.
We can, we can put a condition.
I'm asking if there's any, any restriction, because a lot of people do the dishes, too. So are there going to be 150 dishes at least out there?
150 what?
You know, the dishes people screw onto their house to watch cable and stuff?
Oh, no, no dish.
Let's see how that works on.
Not anymore. Nobody uses those no more. Ma'am, just to us, please.
Laundry or the, you know, the dishes.
Believe me, they don't want dishes on that, so we'll ask, we'll address the laundry. Nobody uses dishes no more, those satellite dishes no more.
Well, I still see them everywhere, but.
Whoever had them, yeah.
And my last issue would be, is there maintenance for the grounds and for the buildings? Are those going to be on-site maintenance?
They have to provide us with a contract with the landscaping company, so it will be one of the conditions to provide a landscape and maintenance to maintain the ground.
And what about, like, what about the apartment, because they're apartments, so what if there's damage to an apartment?
But either they could have a private, or they could do it yourself. Yes, Counselor?
Just for the record, since it hasn't been noted yet, I actually submitted a draft decision this afternoon.
Just the mic, Paul.
Sorry. I actually submitted a draft decision this afternoon.
I was going to ask you about this.
And some of those issues are actually already addressed in this draft decision.
Okay, have you addressed the laun, no laun, can you add?
I did not address laundry specifically, I definitely, I did address satellite dishes.
Not allowed?
Not allowed.
All right, can you add laundry to it?
There's also a requirement that a contract with a property manager, if it's going to be an independent manager, or some sort of information with regards to property management will have to be submitted. So a lot of this stuff will be covered by submittals post-permit.
Okay, what, what do you think about marking for a cross on Red Brook Road, like a road?
Pedestrian crossing?
Yeah.
That'd be one of the recommendations, would be pedestrian activated crossing.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that question.
About, like?
Pedestrian crossing.
That's there, that's between the.
On Red Brook Road?
In the.
Just like painting?
The commission is.
But yeah, you're going to have a road commission, get a permission from road commissioners if they let you do it.
Can I just say one thing?
Yeah, let him answer this question.
For the record, you can see on, I mean, a bunch of sheets, but C 2.0, actually, sorry, C 2.0, go to C 3.0, has the latest that we've received, MassDOT layout. There is a crosswalk at Red Brook Road before the light that MassDOT is putting in. And they're bringing their sidewalk basically to the end of this site on Red Brook Road. And they're bringing their sidewalk basically to the end of this site on Red Brook Road.
I, I see it, and may I ask, that's out of control in the section, so would there, would there be buttons for them?
Uh, I would have, I have to go look at the MassDOT plans. I don't know offhand if that's included.
Most likely.
Probably, I mean, that's, I, I, generally, MassDOT includes those, but I don't wanna.
But it's going both ways. It goes all the way across Cranberry Highway and it goes across, I see it now, yep.
Yeah.
Now, if we do a bus shelter, what, what do you recommend?
Contact with MassDOT? You've been in contact with MassDOT?
Ma'am, ma'am, it has to stay public, the hearing, so we can't, no whispering, we can't do that. What's, what do you recommend to have a bus shelter? What, apparently, if with the new highway layout, I don't know what you could fit it on the highway.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Once again, any bus.
On the mic, please, because he wants to hear.
Jim O'Brien with Dakota. Any bus shelters, stopping, or issues that have to do with the highway or Red Brook Road are out of our control. We can, we can't actually tell you we can do those, and we hope that you don't make it a condition to our permit. You can certainly petition Mass DOT and ask them to add one. We would have no reservation to that, but that's something that's out of our control. MassDOT's already got their design.
Right. And you need a road commissioner permit, anyway.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
Um, why couldn't there be some sort of a bus stop on the property?
Because we'd have to deal with Mass DOT to approve any stops, how the buses get in there, get out of there, and how it affects their highway.
You're just making a turn into your driveway, what's the difference between that and a regular vehicle?
Just because you built a shelter doesn't mean the bus will drive there.
It's a bus route, the company has that.
Pardon me?
Yeah. I mean, the, the days of bus shelters, they actually look ugly, and the GATRA buses today are all sealed, you know, they're protected. I personally don't like the look of a bus shelter because it can, it's something else that someone can wreck or attend to.
Even if you put it inside their property, it doesn't mean they're gonna, that GATRA or whatever's gonna go there.
But GATRA goes anyway, if you call them, right?
That's right.
It's Napol and, yeah.
No, no, it's not their route. They don't go into Brandy Hill, they jump at the bottom of the hill.
Right, you have a drag route. Generally, ma'am, Mr. Chairman, generally, my experience with public transportation agencies, they prefer not to go into private property because of various liability issues in both ways. It's the same reason that generally, school buses for apartment buildings, towns don't love to send them into the, into the place, they like the kids to come out to the public street.
Where's the bus stop for that? That's the question, more than.
Yeah, and that's something that the, it's ultimately up to the school department, how they're gonna run the buses.
Guys have, is there anywhere for the kids to stand?
We have a space down by the community center that large trucks can pull into buses and such. If the school department actually enters the property, we could have them congregate there.
Yeah, I don't think they're gonna enter the property either.
I know.
They may not.
I don't want the kids standing on Red Brook Road either, so we're gonna have to, that is a concern of mine.
I, I can just say, and I don't know about you guys and your developments, but I know I used to live in one, and they did come in through the development for certain bus stops for the kids, the schools did.
Especially at night, come in, kids in wheelchairs, the smaller buses, they're not going into your development, I'll tell you that.
Yeah, it's, it's ultimately the school department, well, I, I don't wanna speak for them one way or the other.
Wow, that's gonna be a problem.
We're gonna have to do something about that, 'cause the kids cannot stand on Red Brook Road, to get picked up.
Off Cranberry Highway?
Off Cranberry Highway.
So, where they gonna, where's the bus gonna pick them up?
Give them all a hall pass and keep them out of school.
What's gonna happen is they're gonna stand in the driveway.
Carl, I can't hear you. Please use the mic.
They're gonna stand in the driveway, and it's gonna impede traffic until the bus picks them up. So, I think you should address that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I think the best way to address it is a condition that says, we'll mutually agree with what the school bus system would like, and we will set a landing area for that circumstance.
Well, we should, maybe you can.
Yeah, follow through with the school department.
Get the school department.
Right, but can we get an answer for next time, next hearing?
I'm sure we can.
All right. See what they like to see.
Sure.
I'm wondering, I'm wondering, I'm looking at this here, I see a place for deliveries and so forth, I hashed off, could, could children wait in the community building and have the bus pull?
He's not gonna go inside.
Bus is not gonna go into the.
They won't go in.
They're not gonna go in. They won't go in, okay.
Like he said, Brandy Hill, they go down and meet them at the street.
They meet them at the bottom? Everyone, Union Pond, they meet at the entrance, eight fifteen, they, they're not going into the.
Why don't we, let's do this, why don't we give, set a plan to the bus, to the school superintendent, or whoever run the buses, say what they suggest? They have to come up with an answer for us.
Yeah, I'll do that.
They cannot, not.
And that'll address, and, that'll address the issue of public transportation.
It would be the same stop.
Same stop.
I mean, I think, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, if it's one or the other, maybe with Cranberry Highway being two lanes and Red Brook one, maybe it would be better to do one on Cranberry.
We'll let the school department decide.
All right.
Okay, sir, Jim.
My assumption is the Red Road, Red Brook Road entrance, that they're most likely gonna wanna stop there for safety rather than Cranberry Highway, and we have some space to the right of that driveway that we can easily accommodate, so if they come back with that.
You just don't want the kids standing in the middle of the driveway, 'cause then it.
Sure, I mean, we have sidewalks all the way down to Red Brook. Usually, they stand on the sidewalk in the grassed area next to it, but if we need a specific area to the right, we can accommodate that.
Okay. Counselor, and you, and your, can, how, you emailed this thing, that draft?
He emailed it to me, I can.
All right, can you send it out, so we go over it quick? So, we could over, get, go, like, read it for the next two weeks?
Yes.
So, we have an idea? Charlie, would you want to add, what do you want to say?
Just before that, Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, that draft decision?
Yeah.
Is very short on project-specific conditions, it's mostly programmatic and sort of standard-type conditions, so there definitely is going to need to be a lot of additional conditions added to that.
All right, so, we should add all, whoever have an idea of a condition, which should.
What I could do is draft up the series of conditions and, and review it with Mr. Haverty and.
Yeah, and add them up so we can review them.
And send them out to the board.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just to help expedite, and that's all good, with your permission, the board's permission, is it okay for Mr. Haverty to share his draft with me?
Absolutely.
As well as, you know, when you have something, based on your discussion that you just mentioned, you know, some proposed conditions that you sent to Mr. Haverty, that you also send it to me? I mean, we understand it's draft and your proposal, but I think it would just expedite, and, you know, we've certainly worked together on past decisions, Paul and I, so.
Absolutely, if you don't mind, Counselor Haverty.
No problem. You'll recognize the framework.
Yeah, I gather so, thank you.
Okay, sir, Mr. Hadley, you wanna?
Richard, Richard J. Hadley of P.O. Box two, Sagmo, Massachusetts. I'd just like to, uh, follow up on my concern about, my concerns about the impact that this project is gonna have on the traffic at the, at the intersection of Red Brook Road and Cranberry Highway. I'll just, they, very quickly, as I stated before, and I think you all know, that I disagree with the traffic impact study that presented here previously, that there's gonna be minimal impact on the traffic as a result of this project. I think just the opposite, not totally the opposite, but somewhat, I think there's gonna be, I think there's gonna be regular traffic problems at that intersection. I've already mentioned that before, and I'm not gonna mention it again. I'm here to, I wanna know specifically, there has been a peer review done on, on the traffic study, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I guess I was naive enough to think that that peer review would, would appear on the Zon, uh, Weyhem Zoning Appeals Board website at the, at the same location as, as the traffic study. But it's not there, so where is, where is the peer review of the traffic study? Where is it? Where can I find it?
Right here.
Okay, I mean.
Can you give him that? Is that an extra copy?
Here, you could have that.
Why, just, okay, so I'll have to look at, I'll, I'll, I'll look at it, you know.
We, we don't do the logistics of how the town put things online and stuff, so, I mean, I can't answer you the question, I can't make them do it, so, there's no sense talking about it.
Well, it, it.
That's on, you have to go address with the select, sir, on, on Tuesday, maybe you should go see the selectmen, because we, we can't make them do the.
I'm not gonna do that, I'll just, I'll just have a look at that. Okay, so that's the first thing. The second thing is, the, in the, from, from, two, two meetings ago, the, the, the representative of, of the peer review had, mentioned some difficulties that he had with the traffic study. And then, in the last, in, at the last meeting, the representative of the traffic study, quite frankly, just dismissed my comments, my, my problems with, with the traffic study, and also the, the comments that the peer review had for the traffic study.
Well, I remember your comment said on the stopping, when it stops, and she did address the issue, her study's based on the stop, when the traffic stops at Cranberry, you said it didn't, but she showed us, she did this, she did do this traffic study when this, when the light, when, when the people stops at Cranberry Highway.
Okay, but, okay, so, my point, as I said then, is that I disagree with, with her findings, and I disagree with her findings as a result of sixty-nine years' observation at that, at that intersection, okay? So, we just have a disagreement.
Correct.
Okay, we have a disagreement.
But you're disagree, sir, so, let me, I know, sir, we're not gonna argue, but your disagreement and my disagreement, it don't make sense, there's somebody professional who is licensed to make these studies, we don't, it don't matter how much I disagree or you disagree, that's what it says. I mean, I, I can't argue if it's signed by a professional engineer.
Okay, so.
I can't go against it if it's signed by her, personally, I'm sure everybody agrees.
So, you have your opinion, I have mine. My point is, my point is, is that the, 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 the peer review has some problems with the traffic study. Who is going to, what is the status of, of, of the difference between the traffic study and the peer review? Is somebody looking at that?
The peer review didn't have any.
Sorry, he did, exactly.
The peer review, by and large, concurred with her methodology and her conclusions.
And recommendations.
I, I don't, well, that's, that's not what I heard from, from the individual who, who presented the peer review two times ago. He said there is an, it, there is a problem at, 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 with, with the, with the full-axis driveway, there is a problem? Is something wrong, sir?
Yes.
What is it?
Take it, read it, and then come back to us.
Look, the, the individual that, that present, made his presentation here?
Yes.
Was pointing to a problem, okay? He was pointing to a problem right over there, okay?
And that's, and that's been addressed, sir.
Okay, how is it been addressed?
That's why he's inviting you to go read it.
Because you should read the answers. Do you have an extra copy and can, of the answers?
That, that particular, are you talking, sir, about the suggestion that the, um, access off of Red Brook Road be right-in, right-out only?
Yes, yes.
I think a suggestion, um, they being our consultant, that the access off Red Brook Road be, uh, right-in, right-out only, sorry, I'm fading, is the.
Okay, so, so you're, you're saying.
She heard in her response on the record.
Okay, you're saying right now that, that, there is no, there is, there are no discrepancies between the, the peer review and the traffic study, is that what you're telling me?
That's not, I don't think anyone said there are any, anything about discrepancies.
No discrepancy, he, he did some recommendation, but he doesn't say the other person, that Mrs. Maderos was wrong.
Uh, that's not, that's not, that's not what I heard, and that's not what I heard from the woman who sat here.
The woman, go ahead, the woman is their consultant.
But, but.
That Mrs. Maderos, right, Colleen?
I, I don't.
That was their, the applicant consultant.
I don't recall anybody from tech coming.
Nobody, there was not.
Kevin Dandray did.
He did.
Okay, okay, okay. Is there, are there any different, it, it, does, does the peer review have any problems, at this point in time, does the peer review have any problems with the traffic study? That's all.
According what we see.
So, I'm gonna read this to you, sir.
All right, yeah, good idea.
This is a response, TEC concurs that the level of traffic impact from the hundred and seventy-four residential units does not warrant any specific physical off-site mitigation at this time. It, it responds in, in, with respect to multiple components, but they concur with the methodology that Ms. Maderos used for traffic counts, um, they concurd with her site trip generation, determinations, um, uh, trip distribution, uh, so I'm sure you'll, you'll read this yourself, but.
But that's, that's not, okay, the, but that's not, that's not what I've heard from, from, from the individual who presented the peer review.
This is signed by that, that gentleman. It's a sign by him.
Okay, so, I haven't read that, because it hasn't been available. Is there anything in there, is there, is there any problems that the peer review has found with respect to the, the traffic impact study? Are there any, any problems at all?
Let me explain to you, the way he puts it, that T, uh, B.S., BSC group, the one the town hired, he.
TEC.
TEC.
TEC?
TEC is who the town hired. BSC is the, that's the group that's representing him.
Oh, okay.
She has.
Oh, okay.
TEC.
All right, so, what he said, anyway, the one the town hired to answer Mrs. Maderos, their consultant, he never, he can, he never comes out and says, "Well, her calculation is wrong, she's wrong." But what he does, he suggests things, he suggests things to make it somewhere maybe a little better, but he cannot, he doesn't point the finger anywhere here, I read it quick, he doesn't say, "Well, she's wrong, the formula she used, it's wrong."
Okay, is anybody gonna, is any, is anybody going to follow up on this, 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 this?
Studies.
Yeah, this, this, uh, non-exact stuff, you're just gonna accept the, the traffic study?
Well, unless some.
Because I think, I think, from what you just said, I think, I think this guy has some, some.
Let me, okay, let me explain something to you. For instance, if, let's say they make a catch basin, take so many gallons of water, and Charlie comes out, say, "This is wrong calculation, they have to change it," so then we, we'll agree, it's a fact, that, that it's the wrong catch basin. But if Charlie says, "Well, it is the right catch basin, but maybe we should make it a bigger one," then we can't make him make a bigger one. And that study is, how the, how he answered this, the, the traffic study, the gentleman, like I'm telling you, he didn't say, "She's wrong, she makes him, she's, she's wrong, it's not how it is." He just suggesting to add a few things.
You know, I think I'm suggesting that there's gonna, there, there's probably gonna be some problems.
I really, I really encourage you, I, I want you to understand, tonight's not your last night to speak. Tonight, we're not closing this meeting.
Right.
So, I think Mr. Baptiste made a great suggestion, we ought to afford you the opportunity to take that and read it and study it, and, and, he's got a copy now.
Uh.
And that way, at the next meeting, you know, you can come back and, and speak in And that way, at the next meeting, you know, you can come back and, and speak in specifics. Right now, we're speaking in generality. Somebody said something that was objectionable, well, that's a pretty nonspecific statement. So we'd, you know, we'd encourage you to read the response and come back with specific issues that you have.
And perhaps you could also share with him what we've received from, uh-
B S C.
B S C.
What's what he has?
No, we're talking, this is T E C.
Pardon me?
No, he doesn't, he has T E C.
Oh, T, I'm sorry.
He doesn't have that?
Let him have that, yeah, I mean-
Is there something else?
You know, you shouldn't, you should, you should have the opportunity to-
Give him this as well.
Yeah, you should have the McMahon response letter and the B S C response letter, yeah.
This is what he needs.
Yeah, you-
He needs that, that's right, you gave him this.
You're kinda, you're kinda, like you said, you didn't have access to information, so we'd like to provide you the information-
All right.
And give you a chance to come back and, and speak.
Here you go, you can have mine.
Have this one. All right, we'll, we'll talk next time.
By the way, all, all files are available in the planning office for review at any time.
At the planning office?
You can go to the planning office at any time and get any copy of anything.
All right, Charlie, you wanna add anything for this gentleman for the accent? Paul, can you add a few things on your list?
That lady's wanting, uh, making a-
I know, I will, I will.
Your one takes 20 minutes.
The, the laundry thing on your draft?
Excuse me?
Laundry, no laundry on the balconies?
I've, I've already noted that.
All right, very good, yes, if you, quick, please.
Deputy to again, so, four more things. First, for the traffic, he'll be quick. For the traffic, is there any way that we can ask for the counterthings? Because I think the traffic situation in that, in that area is a little unique, and I don't know how they use the figures and how it was worked, and I understand that there is this, there is rules and regulations about it. But I still, I, living there, it's, it's different, I think, than the numbers that might work out because of the unique situation. So I was just wondering if, you know, the wires they put across for counting? I was just wondering if that could be used, okay?
We can't do this, and I'm sure her, her, her info, you have to trust a professional engineer when, when they sign on something.
But I don't like it, so I don't want to.
I know, I'm sorry, but they, that's why they're professional. I mean, they're not gonna just stamp something because they feel like it.
Also, I was wondering if there was gonna be security at the, at the development? And, number one, and number two, if building management was gonna be there 24/7, or just 9 to 5, or whatever?
We, we'll ask them.
And also, because there seems to be Mast D O T information here, I was just wondering if they've been in conversation with Mast D O T as far as what's going on in that corner, and adjusting their contributions.
It doesn't matter the conversation, what's there, they deal with what's there. I mean, D O T can make them do something, what's coming in the future, so it's irrelevant. I guarantee you this, am I right or wrong, Charlie?
They issue the permits and it's gonna be, whatever gets issued is gonna be based on their, say so.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Let me, let me go, security, are you having security onsite?
We do, we have a secured FOB system on the entire every building, including the community building.
Okay, and building manager, is he onsite?
We have onsite, 9 to 5, and we have 24-hour coverage of all building management issues.
And what was the security again? I didn't catch that.
It's a FOB security entry system, which is like a pass card.
So there's not a person going around or anything?
No, no, not a person.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, very good, thank you. What else you like to add?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I just wanna make sure I'm clear about open items, so we can get to them for you. Mr. Rowley's review, of course, is open.
Yeah.
And then the water company well monitoring locations.
Okay, we'll wait to hear final answer from them.
Right, I'm gonna actually meet with them, the superintendent and their review engineer, as I did the sewer department, to try to help this along.
Exactly, if you can get from them a final answer. Let me go back to fence, are you guys putting a chain link fence around the property?
No.
No, we are not.
Can we get one?
No, I think that's completely wrong.
Right, it's just gonna make it look like a-
It looks crazy like a project or something.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, forget the fence, okay? Exactly.
Yeah.
All right, sir, go ahead, yeah, next.
I just wanna make sure those are the two open issues, so that we can work on them.
Yes, yeah, all right, very good.
When, when, when would phase one be expected to be complete?
Uh, the tax credit round is filed in November, and it's usually issued around March or April of the following year, with a closing in June, so we probably would start in June of next year.
June of 2019, and, and it would be complete, when would you expect?
They take 12 months per phase.
And, um, what, what do we know about the, the, um, the roadwork? It's gonna commence in the fall of 2019, I'm just trying to play out.
That's what they keep saying.
It'll take two years to construct.
Okay.
Yeah, I think they have a published schedule on their website.
All right, very good, so we're gonna share your draft, yes, just?
Just one question, could I get a copy of that plan where you put the templates on there for the turning movements for the fire apparatus? Absolutely, yes.
Ladies, you're getting a little loud in the back. You can't, like, hear, we can't really hear, yes, ma'am? Yes.
What did you say about the fence?
Fence? Town planner disagree with it, everybody disagree with it. We disagree.
Disagree with what?
To have a fence, it just, it doesn't look good.
I don't want a chain link fence, it means it's too easy for kids to climb it.
Okay, and concrete?
Like a wooden solid fence or something to that, but that they need to also maintain if, if it gets broken, if it gets weathered.
Listen, to be honest with you, I did agree with you fence, but as I think about it, it's not, it's not a pretty, it's not pretty to have a fence.
There has to be a fence to protect those wells, even on sit fire, wanted the fence.
We'll take it in consideration, but the wells, I mean, if a kid walks in the woods, how is it gonna hurt the wells? To be honest with you, how?
Ask Ben, he'll tell you.
We will ask that.
If they need it, they can also build a fence, I mean, they are responsible for their own well fields.
No, I think you-
Okay, so, no arguing, please, that's enough, thank you.
Thank you, we, we-
All right, so we good? We good for next time? Okay, when's the next time? But please, if you coordinate with Charlie to get over the final studies from him, and you're gonna get us, I will call Ben next week, see how he's making out with the letter from the water company.
Thank you, yeah.
But please push him, so we get answers.
Yeah, it's been over a month, and we've been waiting for an answer.
And we need an answer from the school committee, please.
Yeah, the school, we definitely-
If we don't hear from them, we're going forward without it.
Can you guys already, maybe start working on that, with the bus?
Yes.
Place for the kids to-
Yes.
All right, we coming back August 8th, I take it?
Jim had a list of open items, did we complete that? Did we get?
I think he did.
Yes, I have Mr. Rowley's review, the water company well monitoring, and the bus transportation pad.
Correct.
And you're gonna-
No, we're done with the sewer.
Get consideration as to whether or not we need a further response from T E C.
I'll send T E C the response that was provided by B S C and determine whether or not it's appropriate to have another.
Well, there's, that, that, B S C covers only a part of it, uh-
In that, in this particular document?
Part was responded to by Ms. Maderas on the record at the last meeting, I think, June 27. And then the balance of what she didn't respond to, which was responded to by B S C.
Correct.
So I think what she handled was the let, the right-in, right-out off Red Book, Red Brook Road. And I just reviewed the minutes, too, it was definitely that, and then one other thing. But the balance of it is, it was, yes.
Yeah, there, there were two responses, there was one from McMahon on, really, the traffic impact study portion of the T E C review, which was, I believe, Jim, what's the date on, June 25th?
Is written?
June 25th.
Oh, I don't know, but-
Yeah, submitted, and then the one that B S C just did the other day, which focused on. T E C also had some site-related comments, so we address those.
I don't know, was McMahon's emailed to us, June 25th was the date?
Yeah, I think that's the date, but-
All right, uh, okay, very good, so we continue to, to 80, to August 8th? That good?
Yes.
Yep, that's for me.
Counselor, you can make it?
I am not available on August 8th. However, I would note that this hearing is scheduled to close by August 27th, so you probably should go ahead and, and go forward with that hearing on the 8th. Were you gonna try to schedule another one for the 22nd?
We hope to wrap it up by 22nd, if not, we'll have to ask for extension.
So you will be scheduling one for the 22nd?
We will, we're gonna go to 8th and that's 22nd. Okay, so let's-
If you have a copy of this, you might wanna give to Mr. Hadley.
I, I'm gonna tell you what I'm doing. We go, I'm going on the 9th, coming back 21st, so I don't mess up. All right, so continue to August 8th?
So moved.
Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Kayla. Ken, what's this for Square Island?